Good evening, everyone. I am Melissa Gilbert, President of the Lower Marion Board of School Directors, and I want to welcome you to the August 5th, 2020 Special Meeting of the Board. Public comment regarding the Proposed Health and Safety Plan was taken in advance of this meeting. These emails were shared with the Board for our review, and an opportunity will be given during this webinar for live public comment regarding the Proposed Health and Safety Plan via chat feature, and then those comments will be read by our solicitor. And we will open that up after the presentation. And I will now turn it over to Superintendent Copeland.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. Mrs. Schaefer, could you share your screen? So again, welcome, everyone. And this is the second. We did an informational meeting Monday night, and tonight is the night that we're asking the Board to act on recommendations of the administration. Next slide. This slide really talks about what's happened since March. And I'm going to read the slide just to recap where we are and where we're going. The administration this evening is going to be recommending that the Board approve a plan that allows us to start the year in a virtual remote experience. Way back in March, I think it was March 8th, at the first inkling that there would be a student who had been in contact with somebody who had tested positive for some reason. By March 9th or 10th, it was, we closed a school or two because we wanted to do a deep clean, and we didn't have much information. By the end of that week, by March 13th, the Governor had closed all schools in Pennsylvania. It happened that quickly. We then began a process of planning for remote instruction, basically turning the district completely around, trying to support students, get devices out to families, make sure there was lunch offerings for students, free reduced lunch for anyone, and trying to deal with a worldwide pandemic, the likes of which none of us, unless you can remember 1915, would have had any experience with. Back in, as the spring progressed, back in April and May, I actually spoke with the administration about the possibility of having 2,000 to 3,000 students attend a face-to-face summer school program. That almost seems naive now, but it really was my sense that we would have some sense of normalcy by the summer. Beginning in late April or early May, we began planning for what we would have to do if all students went back to school, if there was a return to school that was all remote, and if there was a return to school that was some combination of attending and not attending. By the end of, by June, mid-June, as school let out, we began planning staff development for our teachers. We went out and researched some of the most nationally accredited people in both remote learning and distance teaching, but also just in general of dealing with the instructional process. So that's how we ended the year, and I guess my thought was, taking the lessons learned from the spring, let's turn that into, while we're still living it, a process by which we will be able to go to, should we have to return to remote learning in the fall? Our sense was, we were still going to open up with a sense of normalcy, which we know how to do. So that was our process as we began. We started to look at full remote instruction. In dealing with some of our focus groups and some of our other constituents, it really seemed that, and we still believe, the overwhelming wish of people to be in school full-time. Now we're at the point where my recommendation is that we go remote. One of the issues that's come up is how we deliver that remote instruction. And I've gotten a number of emails from folks who have said, "We should not have teachers in the schools if they're only providing remote instruction." Let me just briefly review a note that I sent to all staff this afternoon. "Having teachers in classrooms is a first step in our commitment to return students to our schools, which is our mission and goal. As soon as we feel measures are in place that will enable us to do so safely. Returning staff to the building also provides access to resources and supplies for people purposes and enables staff to connect those supplies with students. For example, in the spring, with families who are asked to print resources but did not have access to printer, paper, or other materials, staff, both professional and instructional support staff, in school can print copies and arrange a safe pickup for families. Seeing teachers in the classroom setting is comforting and hopeful for students, most of whom are longing for returns to the known routines of their daily lives required to the pandemic. Having staff in their rooms will allow those staff members to set up their spaces in a way that will be safe, but also work for their particular teaching style once students return, allowing students to see what their room will look like with their teacher in it, will also help reduce student stress and anxiety. Returning to buildings during the weeks leading up to October 5th also gives us a chance to ensure our safety and health plans are workable through the lens of our instructional staff being in their schools, thinking through all aspects of dealing with these as modified by various plans. Most importantly, the driving purpose of staff return is to create opportunities that allows teachers during this period of remote learning to connect with the students who need it the most, and create opportunities to provide individual or smaller and personal group protection. Those students would include, but not be limited to, our highest needs special education and English learning learner. The structure of staff return is a work in progress. For example, before we opened the District Administration Office on July 6th, each department developed a plan for reentry, including rearrangement of offices, additions of positions, and creating schedules to reduce staff numbers using common area. Staff, including myself, wear face masks when we leave our offices. There's no communal use of the coffee makers and microwave ovens. We have gradually made more use of offices, but we're also still mindful of social distancing. Schools will go through a similar process, where together, building teams can work out shifts and phase return. Those reentry plans will be reviewed by both Health Services and Operations in order to keep staff safe. No plan is easy, straightforward, or has all the answers. Rest assured, we would not put staff in a position that we ourselves would not enter. Rest assured, we will make sure that we go through a rigorous process before anybody comes back to school, just as we did through the District Administration Office. In fact, a central thrust as to why I'm recommending a virtual start to school is because I'm concerned about student and staff safety." As we discussed at our Monday meeting, we are asking the Board this evening to pass our Health and Safety Plan overview. We went over this in detail on Monday, and the plan is available for review. This includes cleaning, sanitizing, disinfecting, making sure that there's adequate ventilation, social distancing, and other safety protocols, monitoring student and staff health, and other considerations for staff and students. Next slide. Is this the next one, or is it a different journal? This is it? Okay, all right, I got you. So this again is from the other night. The Governor's Office said, "Here are the things that are necessary for schools to open. We have to have some data that supports it, some quantifiable criteria." They said they'll put forth guidance. And if you look at the third bullet, "Reopening necessitates that adequate personal protective equipment and diagnostic testing are available." We, as superintendents, met earlier this week, Tuesday in fact, it was yesterday, with representatives from Montgomery County Department of Health of Montgomery County, who said that they were dissatisfied with the time of testing, and therefore were dropping the current, testing company and moving to a new company that would assure us the test could be done within three days. Again, I'm not a epidemiologist, I'm not a healthcare professional, but when I think of how many student contacts could occur in three days, and how we would do the tracing, I have grave concerns over that. They say that they want a monitoring and surveillance program, but that's not up and running yet. Listening to some doctors, they, for example, the Montgomery County says, "We're doing pretty well. We're below the 5% positive testing ratio of, that's been recommended." So we're at 3.9%. So figure 4%. I asked Principal Ballack in what, "How many students in your school this year?" She said, "1,100." So if 4% of those test positive, what do we got? 44 students? And if students aren't tested, as, let's cut that in half, 22, what are we going to do when those 22 students aren't tested for three days? And how do we figure out how to handle that when a positive test comes back and we have to start shutting down? It just seems to me to be a lot of unknown. Next slide. So we're left to balance. Governor, State says schools, like to see schools open, but the Governor's not the one who's making the decision, he's leaving that to the local health departments. The local health departments vary from county to county as to what they see is going on. I mentioned earlier that Montgomery County is, has a rate of positive infections of 3.9, but that's Montgomery County. And I've had to remind folks, we may be politically a part of Montgomery County, but we're very close to Delaware County and Philadelphia, and those rates aren't that good. Next slide. So we talked about this Monday. Way back when, when we thought if we simply shook hands by touching elbows, infected people were supposedly without symptoms, didn't spread the virus, now we say that infected people without symptoms can spread it. Healthcare workers and symptomatic individuals should wear face masks only, now we're saying everybody should. Symptoms are fever, cough, shortness of breath, now we're saying there's a variety of symptoms. In short, with a novel virus, new information is coming out all the time, and what was true once is not true now, and may not be true going forward, and that causes us, causes grave concern, and another reason why I'm making the recommendation I have. Next slide. So, critical in-school reopening concerns, dealing with conflicting guidance for schools and public health agencies. We are concerned about the cases that are surging in Pennsylvania and elsewhere, because the virus does not know state boundaries. Testing concerns, I think we all would want to see far, far more rapid testing, and then tracing after that. And we're looking at the reopening experiences of other districts, primarily in the South and Midwest, but if districts close to us remain into a hybrid model, we'll have an opportunity to see just how that experience went. But ultimately, we have a responsibility to protect the health and safety of students and employees. Next slide. The instructional planning overview, Dr. Gavioso went over that, and we'll hit on some spots because we've got some questions about the difference between LMSD at home and LMSD. So I'll do that, but I won't take you through the entire instructional planning overview again. What we plan to do is to make sure that we mimic as closely as possible a student's daily schedule in our remote experience. Next slide. So the remote learning phase is at least until October 5th. Now, there was a lot of debate amongst the senior administration about if we were going to go immediately to remote, what do we want to do? Some districts are going the whole first semester, which means that they're committing to a remote experience through the middle of January. Some districts are choosing late September. I think we would need a significant turnaround in testing and contact tracing to be able to get back to school on October 5th. But we chose a date that was basically a month after the start of school. It's an aspirational date. It's a hope that we get there. And then the transition to in-school learning, one of the reasons why I would like teachers to begin to be in school is so that we could start, and I can't say when, but we could start with small groups, maybe three students, who might come in for a short period of time, where the teacher identified them as having difficulty with remote learning. Now, this is separate from special education, where the department would make a different kind of decision based on the IEP needs of the students, so that we could provide the appropriate, pre and appropriate public education based on their IEP. And then we reassess the possibility of increased school learning through some sort of transition, maybe it's a hybrid plan, maybe it's not. But I've been asked, "What's wrong with a hybrid plan?" Well, in order to get students, probably a maximum of 12, in a classroom and still stay six feet apart, you've got students in a classroom six feet apart, they're wearing masks, we're asking them to face forward. There's opportunities for breaks, but specials and so forth, particularly the elementary school, to provide consistent contact tracing would largely be done in the classroom. I tried to decide how I want to describe that situation, but I don't think it's a good one. In fact, if a school did that, we would call it discipline, and I think that would be an unfortunate situation to place students in. Next slide. So, remote learning phase until October 5th. The basis for the recommendation is health and safety concerns. As I mentioned, COVID-19 is brand-new, there's conflicting guidance for all schools. When we had our parent focus group, there were a number of physicians and scientists having a great debate back and forth as to what each thought. We're concerned about the up and surging cases, and the testing concerns are really critical. We can talk about all the contact tracing we want, but if we don't have appropriate testing, I think we've got real serious situations. So that's where we are with that. Next slide. So the remote learning summary, we'll have daily synchronous learning. I think we said it at the last presentation, and I'll say it again. Our ideal learning situation isn't necessarily where a teacher is talking with students for the full time that they're in school. There's group work, there's seat work, there's one-on-one discussions, so it's designed for student engagement. We're really pleased with the staff development that we got, and the staff development that we will build on this fall for teachers, and I was pleased with the reception the teachers gave for that professional development. We are going to go with the lessons learned. We got a lot of feedback from families about how to set up schedules, about the fact that families might need some professional development to deal with some of the platforms that we use. Even this summer, with our summer program, we were looking for two hours of synchronous, I mean, almost after the first couple of days, people were saying the breaks in between need to be a little bit longer because kids couldn't quite sit that long, but we're looking to learn from that, the increased technology for one-to-one students, devices. So those, you can read these, these are a series of things that we're looking to do to make the remote learning experience as robust as we possibly can. Next slide. So if we were to go to a transition to in-school learning by level, we are, our current thinking is that our youngest students, K1 and maybe 2, would be students that we would like to get in there. There's going to be an ongoing responsibility, though, to protect the health and safety of students and employees. I sat in, I think I mentioned it Monday, on a group of kindergarten teachers, and they talked about the simple process of how they would, how do you social distance when you better, you know, help kids with tying their shoes and things of that nature. So, identifying students for in-person individual or small group learning, this would really be based on the need identified by the teacher or the team. It would be probably not a particularly regular set of circumstances, and we would set it up so that there was significant social distancing, and everybody could be safe. Next slide. Then we move on to what the research, possibility of increased in-school learning tells us. We would need a recent reduction of cases, enhanced testing, improved tracing capability, and updated information about the virus itself, along with whatever lessons we've learned from our preparedness. Next slide. Eventually, we would get to the point where we have some voluntary attendance, people coming into schools. Our thinking right now is that the Lower Marion Virtual Academy, now the Lower Marion Virtual Academy is largely asynchronous. We have always, always planned, in fact, we always planned on making sure that we supported it beyond the minimum of what MVP, Montgomery Virtual Program, does. People asked us to look at an LMSD at-home program. What we're thinking is, we would want all of our students to begin with their regular class assignment teacher. What we need, though, is to know who, if we decided at some back, at some point, October, January, March, to go back in, who would, what families don't feel they would want to do that, and that they would want to be in a remote experience all year? So that when we do the initial assignment of students, where possible, the students who want that experience, if Teacher A is a third-grade teacher, and there are four or five students in the other classes who all want to be in a remote LMSD home experience all year long, then we would try and put those students in that class, begin with the full LMSD remote, the full LMSD remote, but then if we went back to school, those students would be able to stay at home with that teacher and we go. Now, what's the difference? Well, in our, in our regular remote experience, the students follow their basic day. If you're going to the LMSD Virtual Academy, that's mostly asynchronous, and you work at your own pace with student support. If you're at the LMSD at-home, it's a much more synchronous experience, but right now, we're only prepared to offer the core content and special education and gifted services. To offer more, be art, music, those kinds of subjects, we'd have to know how many people wanted that experience to see if we could staff it appropriately. So what we're asking between now and August 9th, not to sign up, but to give us a sense as to who you are and what you might want. Next slide. So, if the Board of School Directors were to approve the superintendent's recommendation, the transition team, which has really been preparing for a number of scenarios, we've been preparing for going all at once, we've been preparing for a hybrid model, we've been preparing for a remote model, we've been preparing for things in between, that transition team, which has its regularly scheduled full meeting at 9:00 tomorrow morning, would begin shifting their effort and focus to the approved reopening plan, prioritizing areas such as remote instruction, student orientation. I do think there are ways that we could at least have our teachers and our students meet, but we would want to plan that with conjunction with the school. We need to be able to work on accessing nutritional services for students, planning staff transition into the building, and concert with, again, health and safety protocols, phasing in building-level supports for students, orientating efforts of, orienting efforts of Health and Safety Committee, the research, to make sure people are likely following the rules, and continually the exploration of childcare support options for families. The Childcare Summit that the district organized last week is meeting again tomorrow, and we're looking for ways to support families where childcare is a significant issue. And next slide. I thought it was Monday, but I guess that's it. So that concludes our presentation. Gilbert?
Thank you very much for the presentation, Superintendent Copeland. At this time, I'm going to open it up to questions from Board members, and if you can go into the panelist function and raise your hand, and I will call on you, and then if you could unmute yourself, and then remute yourself when you're done. So I see a question from Lori Ackman.
Hi, good evening, and thanks so much for the presentation. So I'm hoping to get some clarification. So I heard today from Montgomery County that the county infection rate is down to 3.2%, and they've hired a new testing service, as you said, Maki Medical, that has actually guarantees 36-hour turnaround. And in addition, working with stakeholders in our community, I've identified at least 12 other testing sites available to members of the community with a two-day turnaround for testing. So I'm hoping you can clarify what type of, and also, the county says that their contact tracing is up to 96% compliance. So I'm hoping to get a better understanding of the metrics you're looking for for reopening. I found the Health and Safety Plan presented by Terry and Jim Lill's amazing operation of her well-ventilated buildings, very convincing that a hybrid option for those who want it could be safe and feasible. So I'd love to get some clarification on what type of metrics you can identify for this community to get us towards allowing a hybrid option for the many families who say that's the only and preferred way they can get some education for their kids. Thank you.
Sure. So, and Terry can follow up with me. I'd like to know how the county came up with the percentage of 96% contact tracing. That's not something I've heard from them, and I would really want to examine how they came up with that percentage. Again, when I spoke with them on Tuesday, they said it was 3.9%, that's basically 4%. That's still, in Ballackinwood Middle School, even if you go halfway to that, you've got a number of kids who are walking into the building who have been, who could be infected or in contact with someone. Terry, do you have any information?
Sure. The turnaround time for tests is longer than that. Dr. Levine and Dr. Arkush of the County Commissioners, as well as Governor Wolf, acknowledged that the majority of tests are coming back in no sooner than five days, more commonly seven days and up to 12 days. Now, the fact that the county contracted with a different group, that just means for the county testing sites, the group that they were using prior is still one of the main providers for the state of Pennsylvania, as well as nationally. So this is a Pennsylvania unique problem, it's a national problem. So I'm pleased to hear that they are making those improvements in the county. The majority of people don't go to those county sites, though, they're using other sites. As for the contact tracing, Pennsylvania, I believe, has 661 contact tracers, and that is thousands below what their, what national groups They, and that is thousands below what their, what national groups say that they need to keep up with the numbers. They have just gotten an emergency approval to hire 1,000 more contact tracers. According to the John Hopkins site and another COVID testing site, the Pennsylvania's test, contact tracing rate was below 15% of the number of people that were successfully contacted in a 48-hour period. So there may be some differences between counties and so forth, but we're clearly not where we need to be. Additionally, if a person is tested in another county, they're a resident of Montgomery County, they're tested in Delaware County, for example, those results aren't reaching Montgomery County in a timely fashion. So there's some, I'm very hopeful that we're going to see big improvements in both testing and contact tracing. It's also worth noting that the amount of testing in Pennsylvania, depending on which national group you look at, we still place in the bottom in testing, much less than most other states. So that is a goal of Governor Wolf, to get that testing percentage up. So things are improving. I think they're putting a lot of effort into that, but it's been a, a long road with us.
Thank you. I'll call now on Sean Mooreing.
Thanks. I want to first thank you, Mr. Copeland, for representing the information. And as we are focused on the recommendation of starting completely virtual, I just wanted to get some clarity on the LMSD at-home model and where we see potential limitations in some of the limitations that you shared as you were wrapping up your presentation, that that is primarily when we are, just wanted clarity on, that's when we are looking at having a hybrid plus virtual model and whether or not those limitations apply to all levels, meaning high school, middle, and elementary.
Good point, good point. Thank you for, thank you for that. That gives me an opportunity to clarify. The limitations, well, first of all, it's limited. I think that it, I think we'd all agree that being in-school face-to-face model. At the high school level, we looked at a lot of different models. And the problem is, we have, what, 240, 250 different courses on. So to try and put together a process where students could be taught by their teachers, given that array of course offerings was frankly impossible. So what we've come up with is splitting the students into two groups, A and B. The A, the A group would go, let's say, Monday and Tuesday. But the, the B group would, would be a school Monday and Tuesday. But the B group would be able to follow virtually, either through streaming or through other digital devices, those classes on Monday and Tuesday. And on Thursday and Friday, we would not repeat the classes from Monday and Tuesday, but go on to another lesson. But now, the students from Monday and Tuesday would be following along in either streaming or some level of, of digital. Am I, because if we didn't, then there would be situations, given the way our high school schedule is built, where students would go at least a week without any instruction and the administration, and I felt that that was not desirable. Now, we don't see streaming as the end-all and be-all. In fact, I think it has a lot of limitations. It cuts down on interaction. But at the high school level, it seemed to be the only strategy that we could put into place that worked. At the K-8 level, it depends on enrollment. If you get enough students who want the LMSD at-home, where you could provide the core content areas, then you would be able to do that. And if enough students were not in school, and therefore you could, you would be able to close down some classes in art and music or other kinds of things, then you could begin to provide some specials. The thinking right now is that K through 5 would be, you know, a regular teacher. Now, if the numbers don't match, you might have students from various elementary schools in that one teacher's class. And so that would be a change. So theoretically, you begin your elementary days in Kinwood Elementary School, and you, the district decides to go back. It's in face-to-face learning. You don't want to do that. And so you go into your LMSD at-home. That might be taught by a teacher from a different school, and you might be in the class with different students. But they would be a Lower Marion teacher going through Lower Marion's curriculum. Am I, am I clarifying or?
Yeah, and I guess the, the only other thing I wanted to point out or to get clarity on is that these limitations would not, was not what we would be looking at in September. But this is if, this is further down the road if we go, if we have two different modes.
In September, we would go full-on with the assigned teacher with these sample schedules that we put up there. The one perhaps difference would be at the middle school. At the middle school level, we would, we would most likely, unless there were a lot of 6th graders who wanted that experience, at the, at the 6th grade level, we believe it would be, it would be more efficacious for us to deliver that as an upper elementary school. So now you're talking about a 6th grade teacher providing the core courses. But if there are enough, enough students who wanted to do it, then you could have a separate teacher in a regular team.
And I'm sorry, Dr. Gilbert, one, one other question, and that's, you know, I wanted to address the, the issue of staff or have you addressed it a little bit further. I appreciate the reading of the letter and the, you know, situations that, that you noted in terms of the benefit of having teachers in schools. But definitely wanted to raise that as whether or not there would be opportunity or there could be opportunity to provide those additional supports and potentially provide services for our special ed students. And I understand the, the need to make sure that we have those small group opportunities, even in full virtual, to support our students. But could that be done without bringing all staff back into the classroom?
Sure. I think that what Mrs. Fraser is looking at is, first of all, not every special education student would be coming into the building. It would be a limited number. And we would not, I don't envision large numbers of students coming into the building in a, in a face-to-face situation. And a lot of that would have to do with, with consultation with their teachers. I just want to leave that open as a possibility for those students where, where it makes sense. We are going to have everybody's health and safety forefront.
Okay, thank you. Deborah Finger next. And I'm going to go around as many times as people have questions, so.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Copeland, for the presentation and for your clarifications. So I am curious. You've put together a health and safety plan. You've put together a reopening plan. I would like to know both from you and from Nurse Quinlan, how confident are you in the, in the plan that you have put together that it can be carried out to the extent that you have, to the full extent? And I don't mean to the full extent possible. I would like to know, how confident are you in the health and safety plan as you have prepared it? Both for you and Ms. Quinlan.
Terry, go ahead. And let me just say, it's Terry who is obviously, we euphemistically refer to her as our referee with a, with a very large yellow flag that she throws on a regular basis. But she's also working with our operations department to make sure cleaning can take place and so forth. Terry? And we also have doctors that she's consulting with.
Yeah. If I, I think I understand your question, but correct me if I don't. I'm confident in the way the plan was put together and of all the considerations in there. I'm confident with the recommendation for the gradual re-entry of students per the recommendation tonight. What I am not confident about are those things which we have the little control over now that we're, we'll be watching closely. I'm hopeful about them, but I'm not confident right now.
So you're confident that the plan could be carried out as it is written?
As it is written per the recommendation now, yes.
Okay, thank you. At this time, Peter Lee.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Copeland and the rest of the administration for all the work you've put in, putting these plans together. I do have a few questions, but I'll start with this one. So based on the surveys, 81% of parents support some level of in-school classes while we're in green, and 57% support some level of in-school classes when we're in yellow. Given the uncertainty around COVID and the shifting recommendations that you mentioned earlier, this is really an exercise in risk tolerance. Now that we have the LMSD at-home option for the parents looking for the full remote option, there are many families and teachers open to accepting the risk of in-school classes. Can you talk about why we're not offering that option to let them accept that risk?
I think that in my assessment, while they may be willing to accept the risk, I have the responsibility of recommending to the board what risk I think the school district should enter. And that's number one. And I think that the risk would be too great. Secondly, I think that the, the structure of what we would have to do to even be minimally compliant with the recommendations so deviates from sound instructional practices that I, as an instructional professional, could not stand by and look at you as a Board of School Directors and say that we were putting forth an efficacious educational program.
Thanks. A couple of follow-ups to that. So we had multiple doctors and epidemiologists write in citing studies that seem to show low transmission rates among elementary-age kids. Do we investigate these? Do we have experts that we rely on to help us adjudicate all the various clinical information out there?
I, I, I'll let Terry go into specific details. Again, as a non-healthcare professional, my mind is awash with the competing conversations among specialists. I'm used to acceptable medical practice. What I'm hearing is such a wide range and a developing range from epidemiologists, I can't put my, as a, as a, as a non-professional finger on it, and that's what gives me pause. Terry?
Yeah, I think the answer to that seems to be evolving, and it remains uncertain. This past week, there were two important publications. I believe it was on July 31st, the CDC in Morbidity and Mortality Weekly published an article noting that, that children do seem to be able to transmit COVID at the same rates as adults, even younger children. And there was also an article in the Journal of the American Medical Association this week speaking to the same thing. So they're kind of looking at that, re-examining it. So there's no certainty that younger children don't spread it at the same rate.
Thanks. And just one additional follow-up, because you mentioned it. So you talked about how social distancing would impact in-school classes, that, you know, kids all facing forward would be, you know, called disciplined school these days. But isn't that still better than having kids sit in front of computers all day? Isn't the academic cost higher when we're remote than any version of in-school classes?
I don't feel so at this point. I feel that the dexterity that our teachers have learned from over the spring, and I feel that the ability to navigate those digital, listen, it's not perfect. It's by any means, and I don't like it by any means. But as I balance the two, as, as difficult as it is, I think, I think we're better off remote.
Thank you. I'll get back in line.
Yeah, I'm going to keep, I promise, I'm even keeping tabs on how many questions people get. At this point, I'm going to turn to Shayna Kalish.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. I have two questions that sort of go together together. So I'll ask the first part and then follow up with the second. I'm particularly concerned in the virtual model with the experience of our very youngest learner. And I was hoping that you could speak about any additional supports that are being implemented to help students that are new to school, who may struggle with the virtual interface, who, while they're learning these crucial building blocks of their entire education and their lives, especially kindergarteners who are only going to be having half as much instruction by virtue of the fact that we have half-day kindergarten in our district.
I'm going to ask Dr. Vidiosa to speak to that.
Sure. The teams have spent a lot of time talking about the, the earliest learners for a variety of reasons that you mentioned. Additionally, we recognized in the previous remote experience just how much we had to rely on parents to help students access. So, so one of the first lessons learned is that we really need to streamline the, the ways that we're asking students to participate and families to participate. And we need to create some orientation resources that help families navigate things more easily, number one. And number two, help students build gradual independence with accessing their learnings, all the way from, you know, little, you know, little tabs that, you know, username, password, so that they have one thing to do each day, and that's the one thing they learn. You know, additionally, we're looking at creating guides like that for caregivers. So childcare providers will have similar supports to support those youngest learners who are building their independence. You know, additionally, we're, we're talking about building community. One of the most important things for students is to feel part of that classroom community, build the emotional connections with teachers. And that precedes, you know, the foundational learning experiences that are more academic. One of the non-negotiables developed by one of our subgroups focused on community and relationship building in the instructional program has made certain non-negotiables related to morning meeting, building community, and building those relationships. So, so a lot of the practices at the very beginning are going to be focused on helping the students build that, that connection. Additionally, the access pieces, we're going to have the tools that are going to be a little bit different. We've also really changed some of the academic or instructional tools that we have available compared to the spring. For example, we had a lot of families that were asked to print things. And, you know, whether teachers were sending home some packets and families were asked to print, you know, that was, that was a burden on parents as a task. And it was also, there were some equity issues just in the cost of printing. Some families didn't have printers. So we've really shifted our instructional design to make sure that it's accounting for looking at demonstrations of learning that are more digitally communicated. So some of those, you know, include things like Words Their Way, which is a tactile, sort of a manipulative students use in the classroom where they're moving letters. And, you know, the home product might have been, you're, you're cutting out, you know, little letter tiles and so forth. We now have a digital tool that's going to make that much more easily accessible for learners. Other things like our phonemic awareness program, the teachers are, it's important that the students can see the, the teacher mouth movements. So they're preparing some of those, those resources in advance so that they're, you know, video recording the phonemic awareness lesson so that whether we're in a hybrid model, for example, with masks or whether we're in remote, those are easily accessible both by students and families. So they've really given a great deal of thought to how to keep a lot of the manipulative-based resources as part of that concrete learning sequence so that the students can move from concrete to something that's an image, to something that's more. so that the students can move from concrete to something that's an image, to something that's more abstract as they get older. This also includes teams of teachers coming in over the summer to create little Ziploc baggies of manipulatives to send home with students. And that's where, when Superintendent Copeland's talking about, how do we get kids in to meet their teacher? It might include, here's your little take-home baggie of the practice tools that really help you to access the learning and the home practice. So those are just a few things that the teachers have been talking about in terms of really making sure that we feel confident in what we're offering to, offering to the earliest learners.
Great. And if I could just follow quickly on a related topic with you, Mrs. Superintendent Copeland. So with regards to what you were saying about the possibility of phasing in in-person instruction for certain high-need learners, special IEP students, English learners, and the early learners, I'm very much in favor of doing that. As much in-person as we feel like we can safely do is absolutely something I would like as a priority. I'm just wondering what factors the administration is using to decide if and for whom that will get, that will happen? And how and when will families be notified that their child could be included in that?
Sure. Perfectly good question. So the planning for that, assuming the board votes for this model, begins tomorrow at nine o'clock. But that's at the macro level, the district level. And then there's the instructional team, and then there's the teacher team. And we're going to be working with our, our teachers and our principals, and they will come up with some of the criteria for that. So that effort will be ongoing. It's, it's begun in discussion, but will be ongoing in earnest.
So it's possible that it could be on the first day of school?
Not really, because I think a lot, at least from my point of view, the, a large part of the decision is going to be the teacher making some recommendation based on the experience that the students are having, and that wouldn't be known the first day of school.
Oh, so it wouldn't be a universal thing, like the administration could decide that we feel like the entire?
No, 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 we're not, we're not there yet. I think, I think what we would most look for as a universal thing is orientation. Because I think it's important that, I mean, and I said this before, when we closed in March, to a certain degree, that was the easy part. We had been with the kids for three quarters of the year. Teachers knew their kids, kids knew their teachers. We are concerned, particularly at the early elementary level, that we develop some sort of orientation program that brings students and teachers to some recognition early on. That could happen. But the individual, two or three kids of the class, I, at least, I, I, I don't, I don't see that. I'd, I'd need to hear some more from our staff before I, before I commit to that.
Thank you.
Melissa, you're muted. Or I couldn't hear you.
I, I apologize. I was calling on Ben Driscoll.
Thank you.
I think Lucy might have been next in line.
I, I've got, I've got a list, Denise. It's all good. Thanks. I'm going to go with Ben.
Well, Lucy will get your turn, I'm sure. Again, I want to say thank you to the administration. I think one thing, as a quick comment, is while we're getting a 30, 40-minute synopsis, there were literally 10,000, thousands of person hours done by the administration to get us to this point. So thank you for all of that work. But I guess, Mr. Copeland, my question more for you. A lot of the comments we're getting are asking to open schools for the primary purpose of getting some socialization. And I'm, I'm looking at this in two, and I'm going to ask it in two parts. At the primary level, K to five, I believe socialization happens somewhat in the classroom where the teacher will take his or her 25 students, break them up into groups of five, let them work on a project so they can work together. But clearly, that can't happen in this realm that we're talking about. So the socialization, as I see it at the elementary level, can't happen, given the health risks we have. At the secondary level, I'm curious about if we're going to continue as we have with, you know, you go to math first period, the bell rings. You go to chemistry second period. How you, how we would manage several hundred, you know, students at middle schools and high schools combing through the halls, recognizing that that's their eight minutes of where they get to socialize. They get to talk to their friends. And I don't know how we can practice social distancing, you know, at this current stage, in those two environments of letting our kid, our youngest kids work together in groups of five or so, if that is that, and letting our kids transition from class one to class two and catching up, socializing in the middle. Because social distancing is telling us we can't allow that. I don't, it's a long-winded question, Mr. Copeland, but I wonder if you can kind of put some?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, let me, let me tell you, you know, anecdotally, when I was a, an elementary principal, even though I had courses in early childhood development and all of the right pre-professional training, most of my experience was at the middle school level. And I was a middle school teacher, middle school assistant principal, and, and I was handed a K-three elementary school. And I'll never forget, the kindergarten teacher, her name was Pat, I won't mention her last name, but she had kids in various activities around the room. And one of them was kids working with blocks. And I sort of scrolled into the room, it was my first week on the job, and I said, oh, this looks interesting. I'll come back when you're teaching. So by the time I got to my office, she said to me, you know what? You seem like a nice young guy. You clearly have no idea what you're talking about. Here are four books on, on block play. And don't come to my room again until you've read them. And, and I didn't. I mean, I read the books, but I didn't go back until, until. And so a lot of the socialization is, you know, four or five kids working together in blocks, arguing, discussing, working out their problems. And I, I don't know how we do that in a socially distant situation. I, I don't know. And I know our teachers would struggle to figure out a way. I, I just don't know that, that, that that's, that that's viable in terms of, in terms of the high school. You know, one of the things I've had to remind our government leaders in, at the county level, is when they keep talking about contact tracing, I keep saying, you seem to get the impression that schools are run like Little House on the Prairie. Our high school kids are up and moving all day long under the best of circumstances. Now, one of the things we talked about with our high school administrators was, right now, if a student misses or has it, has a free period, the first period, if they're a junior or a senior, they're allowed to come in late. We were going to expand that to all students so that we get less kids coming into the door at the same time. We're also experimenting with maybe dismissing classes at slightly different times so you didn't have the full complement of even half the students, who could be 800 in Lower Marion High School, in the halls at one time. Again, to, to engage in the high school experience and, and not have those experiences, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure if, if the degree of what we anticipate would be socialization is balanced out by the risk. I, I hope that sort of gets it where you were going there.
No, it helps. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Call on Lucy Klein now.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert, and thank you to Mr. Copeland and to the administration for the extensive amount of work that's been going on. I know that it's just been hours and hours since March trying to revamp an entire educational system. I wanted to sort of follow up a little bit on both what Shayna and Ben were talking about in terms of both touches in, with respect to like connections between teachers and students, and also connections among students. And among the many conversations I've been having over the last several weeks, as I'm sure most of the board members have, with various friends and community members and neighbors talking about sort of reopening schools, one of the conversations I had focused on what type of system or, you know, model would provide the more, or the best, or sort of more effective connections between students and teachers. And it was interesting to me that one of the parents I was speaking with really felt that a remote program where teachers and students were seeing each other every day would actually provide a little bit more of a connection than a program, like, than a hybrid where you might be in school for two days, but may not connect with those teachers again to those other three days. So I was wondering, Mr. Copeland, if you could speak to that a little bit? And then also speak to the idea of having opportunities, whether it's class-based or activity-based, for students to get together in terms of some of the smaller groups and the orientation piece of it.
Sure. Let me take the first part. Yeah, I, 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 you know, one of the benefits I had during the spring was popping into classes. I would ask teachers to send me their Zooms, and I would go into classes. And look, I, I'm not, you know, this isn't my first time at this. Clearly, if a teacher gives me their Zoom, they must have something good they want to show me. So I did see a lot of good stuff where teachers were breaking kids into, into groups, and then the teachers were going into the groups. And there was a lot of dialogue, and there was a lot of back and forth. One of the things, one of the, one of the subcommittees is looking at teacher expectations, but we're also looking at terms of governance. So one of the, one of the lessons learned is, you know, we're going to be saying to students, you got to show up at school the way you would show up to, to school. You got to have your camera on. We got to see you. And you got to, you know, kind of play school. And that gets you in the mindset of a different situation where the teacher can then put you in groups. I'll let Jen talk a little bit about the staff development in a second because that, that was, I think, particularly at the secondary level, something that they were interested in. And I can't remember the second part. Was it? You would ask Lucy that the second question was?
About which type of model would provide?
Oh, okay.
Would provide different levels of connections between teachers and students?
Good. I'll let, then I could hand it over to Jen, and she could do both.
In terms of the, the continuity of learning, one of the things that came up in the instructional team was the, the challenge, for example, in the hybrid model where you have some students who might go five days without, you know, seeing their teacher necessarily. We're exploring lots of different ways to build that up. And I think, you know, we've got, we've got, you know, reading and math happening in elementary on Wednesday. One thing people might not realize is that if we have students in the buildings on those other days, they lose the opportunity for any meetings that would typically occur because of the supervision of distancing, the different mustering areas for the morning. So those meetings had to be, had to take up a little bit of time on, on Wednesday, but they'd still run a compressed schedule. So we were at least able to accomplish that. But that Thursday, Friday in elementary, it just was felt to be a big gap, especially for, for little ones. That continuity of learning really felt stronger with the daily contact, even though we're still exploring ways to, to strengthen it and find synchronous opportunities. So the, the second part of your question, I think, was the connections between students and the collaborations. That I've been so impressed with the conversations that are happening across all levels. Even when the students are in, you know, we've been very intentional with our planning so that if we have to face a full return, if we have to face a hybrid approach, if we have to face remote learning, our teachers are, are having conversations so that our program is flexible and we can be responsive. So some of the ideas on how to have students who are sitting in these rows face-to-face have been creative, where students could perhaps be in groups. We're also talking about how students who are at home could log in for a synchronous collaboration with peers, even if the classroom teacher, for example, in middle school or in elementary school, is with a different cohort of students. So if I'm a fourth grade or fifth grade teacher and I'm with Cohort A live in front of me, for example, I could potentially have students in Cohort B be in class with a literature group with kids if they're engaging remotely. So they've, they've been really creative with how to bridge these distances. But it, it's still much more challenging. When the students are all together remotely, you have your whole class. You can put them into, you know, potentially breakout groups. You can manage that, that ebb and flow of synchronous and asynchronous and approximate an actual instructional design a little easier because your students can move from the direct instruction into those tailored experiences that help teachers personalize learning. So, so some of that is, is where the, I think your question was, the, the strength of the continuity was part of the, the remote recommendation.
Thank you. And I just wanted to follow up quickly, Mr. Copeland, because you had mentioned about the, especially at the high school level, students needed to sort of check in for attendance every day and have their cameras on. And I just wanted to follow up and say, I know, especially having high schoolers, that there was a lot of concern about that particular issue, that students weren't putting on their cameras. And so I am grateful to hear that that's, that sort of student responsibility side of it will be, become more standardized and required of the students because I think that's really important, and I think that that will help with engagement as well.
It was a little bizarre to check into a class and see me, the teacher, and a series of avatars.
Thank you. Lori Ackman is next.
Yes. And today, sorry, I'm just looking at my calendar for a second, is August 5th. And given how the, the results of our survey from both families and teachers, hundreds of letters stating all different points of view, but many really talking about how remote learning was difficult for their children and their families, especially those with special needs who have parents who are required to go to work because they're working on the front lines or have jobs that don't allow them to work at home. Since, as you said, circumstances are changing so quickly, what if, you know, by the end of the month, school doesn't start till September 8th? What would it take for improvements in testing and contract tracing to offer a hybrid model either when school starts or October 5th? I just, so many people expressed to us that remote learning did not work for their families. And so I think it's really important to establish some criteria of decision-making around when hybrid could happen. We have a window now with warm weather and possibility to have folks be in person, at least for now, to meet teachers, to get a sense of context of their classes before perhaps the flu season is upon us. So I just want to, if we, if I could get a little more insight into criteria, otherwise this seems like a, a no-start plan in terms of in-person education this year. And that makes me really nervous for our community.
So as, I think I've, I've been honest to say that when we started remote learning in March, we started while we were trying to figure it out ourselves. And I think we've grown, and I think we can provide a much better instructional program now than we were able to do in the spring. In terms of what the metric would be, I really, what I, I can't give you any more than I've already given you. I'm looking for increased testing, and I think three days is still too long. I'm looking at a decrease in the positivity rate, and I'm looking for contact tracing. But beyond that, I'm, but beyond that, I don't have any particular, and I, and I'm sorry, I don't have specific metrics that are aligned any better than that. But that's all I can do, and it's my recommendation.
But if right now we're at a 3.2% positivity rate, and testing improves in a month or two months, and contract tracing, contact tracing improves, would hybrid be a possibility then? Because otherwise, it just seems like you're saying there, there's no chance for in-person school this academic year. And I would just love to get some more specifics.
And I wish I could give you more specifics. As I said before, a 3.2 positivity rate means that there's going to be three students for every hundred who could be testing positive, walking into a building with, right now, little or no contact tracing. And we have no idea how long that student would have been in the building without testing. They're promising three days. I, I, I think everybody says that immediate testing is what's necessary. I, I, I think everybody says that immediate testing is what's necessary. And I don't know how long that's, that's going to take before that takes place.
Thank you. Sean Mooreing?
Whoops. Thanks. So I wanted to just follow up. I know that, you know, when we initially shut down in March, we made lots of efforts to get devices out and lunches and were provided and things of that nature. But I also know that, you know, we also recognized that there were issues around, you know, folks with multiple siblings and also highlighted some issues around access to Wi-Fi and things like that. So I just wanted to know if there were any efforts or if we've made any adjustments to look at that as we are contemplating going into virtual in the fall.
Sure. So I know we ordered 1,400 new devices. Mr. Fraser, how many have come in so far? You told me 400 the other day.
400.
Oh, has it improved from 400? Okay.
It hasn't.
But at least we got 400 in. So we, we expect that to improve. In terms of lunches, I'm looking for Mr. Orlando.
There he is. There we go. As far as lunches go, in the spring when we closed, the National School Lunch Program allowed for us to serve all the children free lunches. That is set to expire the end of this month. We're hopeful they will extend that waiver. Otherwise, we would start the school year, as it would under normal, the National School Lunch Program, having lunches for the pre-reduced and paid students. They would have to come to the facility or the building to get those meals.
Okay. And the internet. We are, we have contacted, Mrs. Buckman has contacted Comcast for, I forget what the program is called, maybe. Tell us where we are with that.
Sure. We had a meeting earlier this week with the team from Comcast in reference to becoming sponsors for the Internet Essentials Program. And that is their broadband program for low-income families. And the way it would work, it would be that families would, would apply for Internet Essentials and then essentially the district would get the bill for those qualified families of students. It would be, the, the quality of broadband is one that would allow for several children in a single household to be online at the same time.
And just one technology follow-up. I know some teachers have raised questions around if all the teachers are in the building and providing, you know, learning over virtual. What, what would happen if we, you know, have we looked at enhancing or expanding our ability for, for broadcasting in our broadband within the, the buildings?
So we are increasing our internet connection from one gig to two gig. We've already had our initial meetings with CenturyLink to do that. To do that, coincidentally, that just happened to be in our budget last year. So we're already on the path to doubling our, our internet bandwidth.
Thank you. Suba Robinson had a question.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. And thank you, Mr. Copeland and members of the administration that have helped us, bring us this far in terms of information gathering and calling all of our input. In terms of Lower Merion Virtual Academy, you have to choose at the beginning of the school year to go for the semester, correct?
Be, because it's largely asynchronous and you're working on your, at your own pace, it would be difficult to begin it and then stop it halfway because you may not be in, in alignment with, with, with the teacher. Now, is that impossible? No, we get kids who enter the school system from other school systems all the time and they face that same tricky situation. It sort of depends. But, but we would, we would ask people to stick it out for the semester.
Okay. And you also mentioned that you would have the Lower Merion teachers embellish or help to transform that to a little bit more than?
Yeah. The, the plan had always been to not just sort of have, have them adrift, but we would, we would hire folks who are familiar with the school system to make sure that they kept pace with them or use people within our, within our school system.
Thank you.
And we've gotten a number, and I, I don't know if this is a huge number, but we have gotten a number of parents who have said, listen, I know this isn't the preferred model, but given our family situation, I like the idea that the students are going to be self-paced and they choose, they've chosen that model. They know that, they know that they still get to be associated with the Lower Merion School District. They, they know that we're going to do a better job than, you know, a charter school, but, but they don't want, but they like the self-paced aspect.
And it's also a great opportunity for students who have someone who has compromised medical issues at home or can't make it in. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Finger next.
Hi. Okay. Many, many parents have written in about the well-being or the, the depression, the despondence of their children who have been home and who have not been able to be with their friends, be with the teachers. And what I would like to know is, how can we address the issue around student well-being in this time?
Yeah. Dr. Nurey spoke about that a little bit on Monday. He can, he can respond to that again. Dr. Nurey?
Yeah. That, that is an excellent question. And I think it speaks to the dilemma we're in where we're trying to balance the, the physical health and safety with the social, emotional and the mental health. I think it's important to, to recognize the two are intertwined. And many of the models prescribed by the National Association of School Psychologists, and there's a crisis model, the prepare model, it really outlines sequentially things that you must consider when addressing the social, emotional needs of individuals who are going through a crisis situation. They start with recognizing the importance of preventing situations. And I think, you know, we're, we're working through that, but we're, we're at a very different phase. The next situ, phase is talking about the importance of reaffirmation. And that's really establishing health, safety and your core physical needs. And they really espouse the importance of, you know, before we can get into addressing social, emotional or even some of the mental health, we have to make sure that we're safe, we're healthy, our physical needs are being met, our, our food and our health and safety are secure. Once we can establish that, you know, then we have to then move forward and talk about and assess to what extent, you know, are the social, emotional needs. We, as a district, have, have recognized that whenever it is we return to school, whether it's remote or in person, we have to address the fact that many individuals are going to come to school anxious, nervous and, and in a very startled state because we left very abruptly. We're putting in a lot of work right now in acknowledging that we, we want to put into effect a multi-tier model where, you know, all students will get some level of support, where there's going to be many layers of, of check-ins where, where staff are going to be assigned student check-ins, where they're going to be, whether it's weekly or so often, just making sure. Because some students may not be vocalizing that they need help, but when individuals check in with them, they, they might be seeking those supports. We want to, you know, infuse social, emotional lessons into the curriculum. So our student, our, our staff members in the social work, psychology, counseling departments will be providing some additional lessons, providing some resources for teachers. And then we recognize there's going to be a higher level of support. Those who come to school who may have been traumatized or impacted by COVID or other forms of trauma might need another level or tier of support. You know, that might be individualized support with, you know, student services member. It might be group counseling. And then there might be some individuals that need, you know, a, a much higher level of care, whether it's, you know, resources with a crisis center or connections with local community providers. We're looking at providing and making sure these supports are in place, whether it's an in-person or remote setting. We've been meeting weekly. We, we have a committee of building principals, administrators and some student service staff members who, who are looking at and trying to devise this plan so that the first day of school, once it kicks in, we will have these things. And these are not optional considerations. These are going to be built into the curriculum so that all students have access to these supports, are aware of them. And, and we recognize trauma is going to be a big part of the, the beginning of school year. So we have to provide a training on trauma-informed care so that teachers can recognize what are the signs to look into when a child needs some more support and, and really looking from a lens of a strengths-based model and, and recognizing how we can empower students and, and ensure they feel a sense of safety and security.
And this is happening, I mean, you know, if we were going with the recommendation, these are practices that are going to be in place in this virtual situation? Well-being will be incorporated into the daily plan?
Correct. The, the committee's been looking at ensuring set times, both in the, the remote and the in-person time. So at the elementary level, looking at what are some common times where there's a lot of team and, and community building? That might be morning meeting. And then also at the secondary levels, we have secondary principals that are part of the subcommittee as well. And they're securing time to devote specifically to the connection building, relationship building and the community building as it relates to social, emotional learning. So that's something that's being worked into right now as we speak in both the remote and the in-person return to school plans.
May I follow up a little bit on, on some red, on a readiness question? Is that okay? Sure. Thank you. So you've talked about how, you know, teachers will be implementing these things. How are we getting teachers ready to be prepared to teach online and to be ready to implement maybe, you know, this well-being curriculum and even any sort of virtual curriculum? You can't just take what you've been doing in person and put it online because that's just not how to design for online learning. You, you have to transform basically what you're doing. I, there are still certain things that, that will happen. And I know there's been, you know, the instructional design team and the curriculum team has been, you know, that subcommittee has been working on it. But with respect to all of this and the well-being, what, how are we making sure? Because a number of parents have written in about this. How are we making sure that our teachers, beyond the June in-service that had however many, you know, however many teachers we have in the district in these Zoom calls? Aside from that, how are we making sure and that our teachers feel ready? So that way, they're not coming to, you know, coming into this situation with a feeling of anxiety and a, in a deficit model?
Jen, why don't you give an overview of where we are now on the, the opening, the staff development? And then Jill can talk about this.
Sure. So, so there are a couple, there are a couple of layers to, to answering your question. So teacher readiness, you know, we, we had a robust PD experience in the spring. While teachers, you know, encountered this cadre of experts, we also built in some time for them to collaborate and process as teams together. Over the summer, they have something called a five-hour collaboration so that they can come together, they can discuss, they can plan, they can do some of the setup work for, whether it's a Google Classroom or Blackboard, to apply some of what they've learned. Now, in addition to that, these essentializing curriculum teams that are coming together, they're, they're helping to, to take some of our curriculum resources. I mean, there's a really robust, rigorous, articulated curriculum for, for subject areas. Taking that and translating it into, you know, what would this look like digitally? For example, is, is a piece of the conversation. Another is what are the essential skills that a PLC should design around? So the work of that committee is to help really do some of that decision-making early so that when a PLC comes down to the design phase, where, you know, they, they, they have the guidance to already know the essential skills, already have some guidance in place that allows them to be innovative and creative in response to their students' needs as they're teaching. Other scaffolding or supports we're putting in place for teachers, you know, we recognize that not everybody has exactly the same technical skills. So some of those teams are taking the resources and preparing, for example, the interactive PowerPoint. You know, where can we create, for example, we'll take, you know, maybe you did a presentation in the classroom using PowerPoint. We're going to give you, for example, a pair deck presentation to teach that skill so that you have a little bit of a start to the year. You can see how it works. Some is created for you. Additionally, the teams doing that this summer creates an in-house cadre of expertise so that there are people on teams who, as we're going through the year and they're working in PLCs, you know, there's a person on the team who has been involved in the, the essentializing work and some of that working can help. So, so that's some of the process support. Additionally, the, the professional development is one of the subgroups of the instructional committee. And, and professional development team has taken these varied resources. We've learned a lot. We have a lot to work with and from as we move into this phase. They've organized it, I mean, down to the point that if you're looking for a presentation tool, here's what we have, here's how you use it. If you're looking for X tool because you want to engage students in this way, here's a tool, here's how you use it. So they're, they're really doing a lot to organize those resources. Additionally, the teacher schedule for the year, PLCs have a responsibility to do some planning of instruction. Part of a professional, a PLC stands for Professional Learning Community. That professional learning is embedded as part of the group practice. One of the subgroups is a teacher expectation group, which is working to align expectations so that as teachers are, are working, they're all moving in the same direction with similar expectations, so similar templates. So when we're communicating with families, we're filling in the same, like we get a glance-type template to make it easy for families. A lot of that's going to be streamlined and easier for teachers. The nice thing about that is it makes collaboration a lot easier so that teams can be strengthened because everybody is working towards the same thing. So somebody who's struggling a little bit has the aid of others who are working on the same thing and can assist a little bit. So those are just some of the supports. One of the things we're doing in the next couple of weeks is pulling the principals together to go through those teacher expectations. We have embedded into the PD plan for August, you know, time to go through all of this with teachers, time for them to meet as PLCs. That includes the trauma-informed care training that, you know, Dr. Nurey was talking about. You know, and additionally, you know, to answer your question about how can we be sure, part of what we're looking at is embedding more of the, the teaching. You know, we, we collected lots of Zoom links last year. So this is going to be embedded in the schedule, making it easier for principals to just get in and visit. Additionally, part of the common template gives principals a way to view in advance and see the upcoming week and guide and coach and stay on top of helping teachers just maintain continuous improvement because that really is getting us back to normal because we always want to operate with reflective practice and continuous improvement. And that structure is going to help principals support and coach teachers too.
And all teachers from K to 12 are part of PLCs?
PLCs, each has a grade, they're grade-level teams, grade-level PLCs. Sometimes there's a grade-level team, sometimes it's a content team, sometimes they have both, like in middle school. So each, each group is part, people are part of a group. Elementary, sometimes what you run into is the way specials are scheduled. If you have that extra special, you end up with fewer times when a whole team can meet all together. But principals typically plan so that they have a planning partner at least. So things like that offer support for teachers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Lee is next.
Thank you. I have two follow-ups from earlier questions and then my own minor question. Mr. Copeland, earlier you mentioned about the need for improved contract tracing in order to open. Based on the challenges that you mentioned, especially at the high school level, will our contract tracing ever be good enough to open? It seems like the chances seem pretty high that if we open remote, we may end up remote all year.
I think contact tracing is highly reliant on testing. So I think that if So I think that if the testing were robust enough, then the contact tracing might have some dilapidity. I can't, um, I can't predict. It's, I, I can only look at what our specialists are doing. There's a health and safety group that's going to be advising me, that they're, they're, they're able to look at it. Um, but I think it's a real problem. Contact tracing is really after the testing. And the real issue is if you can get a test back real fast, then your contact tracing is going to be more robust. That's, that's what the literature has sent to me.
Right. And um, one follow-up about the positivity rate. Um, the, the number that everyone is talking about is the positivity rate of tests. Because we're not doing universal testing and because the tests are being administered to folks who are at risk of being infected, not randomly selected, the actual infection rate is likely considerably lower than, than the just under 4% that's being cited. Um, just because those are, those are selected populations, not randomly selected. Just, I'll just wanted to note that. So, you know, when you talk about 44 kids in a school of 1,100, it's actually likely to be considerably lower than that.
Slightly what?
To be considerably lower than that because the positivity rate is not infection rate. It's, it's the positivity rest rate of tests administered, not, and those aren't randomly selected. Those are high-risk identified folks who need tests.
I'm going by the information that I've seen by epidemiologists.
Okay. Can we dive a little bit into um the groups of children that might be brought in for small group instruction? Um, I think it's great that we're already planning for bringing kids in based on their IEP accommodations. I think it's great that teachers will be identifying kids to bring in for small groups. Are we going to do anything more systemic and programmatic than that? I, I think, um, are there specific populations of kids that we'll be identifying? I guess I'm specifically worried about um, you know, the, the risk of the achievement gap widening during this period. Um, and then also those small kids whose parents are both essential workers. I think those are at-risk populations as well.
So um, as I said in, in the beginning, this is a concept. What I need to do is get our teachers and our, and our building administrators and our central office together to say, we're going to have this capability. What, give me some, I, I, I have a concept of what I think it ought to be. I want to hear from you as to what you think it ought to be. My interest is also the achievement gap. My initial interest, to be perfectly honest, was when a teacher saw a student was either disengaged or having a difficult time with, with the remote learning, whoever that student might be, whatever the set circumstances might be. Um, I'd like to hear more from teachers and professionals about what they think they need.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'm Shayna Kalish.
Thank you. So my question is in regards to childcare. And while I know that the purpose of school is not to take care of people's children for six hours, that is sort of the way that our society has evolved in a capitalist system where people have jobs and then plan based on the fact that they can send their kid to a school building for six hours a day. Um, I know our survey results put in a little more than a quarter of respondents saying that childcare will be an issue for them. Um, my question is, if the point of having students learning virtually at home is to keep them healthier, to lower our rate of infection, um, and then working parents have to then turn around and put them in daycare, um, which is theoretically akin to being in a school building and sidebar that it might be very difficult for, say, eight, nine-year-olds where that may just not be a daycare opportunity that even exists. Um, I'm wondering if, I'm wondering how that is a safer situation than bringing them in and having them in school? If, if, if they're going to be in a building around other people, around other children that's not their household, aren't we better putting them into a school building?
Um, it's a fair point. It's not one that I can respond to because there's a, there's a plethora of different kinds of daycare. Uh, when we met, um, and I met with a short time, and I know Amy and um, Amy Buckman and, and, and Megan Schaefer met with them and are meeting with them tomorrow. Um, many of them were um in, indicating that, actually, they thought that, you know, some of the younger kids kind of complied better and the older kids meeting nine, 10-year-olds were real problems. Um, and so they're having, from what I could see, some of them were having their difficulties in terms of compliance and so forth and so on. So I think it may depend on that. Um, I, I am extraordinarily empathetic to the issue of working parents. Uh, having been one myself at, at, at a time when I had young children and, and the vagaries of what happens when you get up in the morning and you're ready to take your kids to daycare and they grow up or whatever, you know, now you have to find a, a place because they won't take a sick child. Um, uh, but um, um, again, this is all a balancing uh issue. Um, how do we balance what is in, in front of us as a pandemic and an issue with the support? You know, I got to give um the two administrators credit. I don't know of any other district that has really set about the idea of saying, what do we do about daycare? And how can we work with providers to make a better situation for their families? That's, that's, it may not be a perfect response, that's been our response.
Thank you. Um, Ben Jasko?
Uh, thank you. I think my question's probably for Ms. Quinlan. Uh, I guess it's a two-part question. The first part would be, as, as some of us go to see doctors and dentists and whatnot, they require to take our temperature before we're allowed into the office. I don't see that being a workable thing for students showing up in a 15-minute window where we take their temperature before we would let them into the building. So we're missing, it's just an impossibility on a temperature testing. And then the second thing on testing in general, testing for COVID in particular, it's my understanding that it's still um self-selecting such that if I'm not sick or I'm not feeling bad, I don't get the test, but I could be an asymptomatic carrier. So isn't the testing even of itself at this stage? Because it's not as widespread, not very helpful in some regards. And my follow-up to that, Ms. Quinlan, would be, can we require kids to take the COVID test before we allow them into our buildings in any state? That's my question.
Okay. Um, the first part regarding the testing of uh, or the screening of children when they come to school. Um, we, we considered that a lot in our committee. And, and then um the Pennsylvania Department of Health and the Department of Education and the Montgomery County Department of Health, um, they recommended that we do not do that and screening be done at home because as, as you've read, you've heard that um the majority of kids that are infected with COVID aren't going to have a fever, a significant fever. So um, that said, I just want to clarify that we still are taking temperatures of specific groups of students while at school. And those would be students who are more medically fragile or students who, because of their disability, uh, can't communicate how they're feeling, or perhaps students whose primary language is in English. So we'll be working with uh teachers and with special education staff to identify all these students that we will screen and give a more thorough screening. Um, additionally, with this um more gradual opening, it gives the nursing staff an opportunity to go into the rooms to really make contact with teachers and staff to have those conversations with families about health and to get some baseline information. Uh, so there'll be more contact with the students that are in the building. And um, we plan to begin with that right away. Um, with regard to testing, yes, you're right that um a lot of uh students won't be symptomatic, so they don't get tested. What we often see though is that their um household uh family members do get symptomatic, the older people. So they get tested and then the child gets tested and that's how we come to know about it. Um, to your question of could we require testing of students? Uh, well, uh, public schools traditionally don't do that. Um, we would only do that upon order of the Health Department. Now, certain um independent schools or colleges are going that route. Um, the problem is unless you have a, a really quick turnaround time, you could get a negative result on a, a Monday and um that child could be positive, you know, uh, by the time that test is back. So I think even a testing program in universities, they say that they basically, for children that are living there or, or young adults that are living there, they would have to test every couple of days to get an accurate picture. So if, i- in an ideal world, if we could get testing, which you would get um that very quick testing, you know, the 45-minute testing and you could test every child, that would be terrific. Then we could, you know, uh, and you could test every staff member. We could stop it in its tracks. But that's just not where we're at with the testing yet. Um, there are five states, I don't know if Pennsylvania will go in with this. It's just our uh purchasing these rapid tests. So um, this might be another way that Pennsylvania goes so that we have some ability to test people very quickly and that would be ideal. Did that answer you?
It, it did, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next is Lucy Klein.
Thank you. I um want to circle back to a conversation earlier about the LMSD at home program um or opportunity. Um, I think when we were talking about it earlier, um, it was sort of um in reference to the hybrid um and, and how it would flow if we were in a hybrid program and then flow into um LMSD at home. So if we start virtually um at the high school level, the students would be in all of their classes, so the core classes and the um and their specials, sort of the elective classes, whether it's band or food and nutrition or things like that. And if we were then to move into hybrid, so we were, so we were moving into, into in-person school because that's something that I think um many of us want. Um, so at that point, if, if a family decided to stay at the LMSD at home program in the high school, they would then just do all of the sort of, you've got your A cohort that's going Monday, Tuesday, and your B cohort that's going Thursday, Friday. The um LMSD at home students would just stay in their regular classes and be in um sort of just doing the virtual part of it all, all of those days. Is that an accurate assessment?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that because I know there were a lot of concerns about the possibility of specials not being um part of the LMSD at home. And so I wanted to clarify that at the high school level, that that is um a piece of that. And especially as we really hopefully move into a sort of hybrid and then back-to-school program, if the students were staying virtual, that they would still have those opportunities.
Yes, that's, that's, that's the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Um, thank you. Next will be Lori Ackman.
Um, yes, so um, I am really concerned about um, as you know, a virtual start to school and missing key touchpoints and relationship building between teachers, between peers, and in classes. So um, would, what if, what is the plan? And how, how would we allow that to happen? I'd like a lot more specifics about an onboarding plan. If, especially for kids entering new schools, um, I've advocated for an early start to school for um kids who were starting middle school and high school especially for the first time. And I'm also wondering if teachers and parents are willing in a specific class, would they be allowed to socially distance, meet outside as part of an onboarding process to allow them some community building um at the beginning of the year?
So as I, as I indicated earlier, um, again, that's a concept. The concept is um, we would like to have some sort of orientation program, particularly at the elementary level or even at the, even at the transition levels at middle school and high school. Um, should the board vote for um the, the virtual model? Uh, as I indicated, that planning in specificity begins tomorrow.
But could, could that plan include any outside, in-person, socially-distanced meeting to take advantage of the warm weather and the safe practices of being outside?
Well, certainly, absolutely. I think, I think being outside um would be the preferred model, um, absolutely.
Um, P, I'm sorry, Peter Lee?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Copeland, I think you mentioned on Monday that you thought uh, we would be more likely to cancel sports with a hybrid or full opening versus a remote opening? Is that still the way you're thinking?
Uh, well, um, the Central League is, I think, going to vote tomorrow. Uh, my understanding is that the Central League is going to push off athletics beginning until August 24th. Um, what I said Monday was um, initially, when, when we were in a either hybrid or a full-on program, my concern was that kids would be uh participating in sports after school and um then they would be coming back into the regular school and kids who chose not to participate would be at risk. If we're in a virtual program, and I, I will admit that I'm in the minority on this in talking with my colleagues, I see more of a possibility if someone chose to participate in a sport. Now, whether we're going to have anybody to compete against or not uh remains to be seen because I'm hearing anecdotally more and more school districts are um, are looking at the idea of canceling fall sports. Um, but um, uh, I'm, I'm sort of of two minds on that and, and, and I, and I don't have a clear recommendation for the board at this point. I'd kind of like to hear what the, what the, what the um, what the league says tomorrow.
Okay.
And to be clear, we're not voting on that tonight.
Right.
Just want to be clear, we're not.
Um, but just, it, it, if the Central League decides to continue with sports, um, would we continue with sports? Or are you thinking?
You don't have to.
We'll take our own direction?
Yeah, you, I think, I think um we'll be able to take our own direction. Initially, I was concerned that there were some league rules that would penalize schools who, who sort of went off on their own. The sense I get is that the league is not going to take um, to take that approach. I'm hearing that from the league president uh who works for them. So um, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty certain that, 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 that's not the approach that, that they would take. Um, I, I think, you know, what I'm hearing is there are some models where schools are saying, well, we can do tennis, uh, we can do golf, and we can do cross-country. And I'm like, okay, I, I get you. Um, uh, you're, 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 you've got all kinds of touches with, with tennis and I've coached track and cross-country and it's not as, as non-contact all the time is, is one might think. But clearly people are concerned with football, soccer, uh, field hockey, uh, where, where there's more inclination to be in, in contact with one another. And, and I think we're seeing that at, at various levels.
Okay, and just one clarification. When you say that the sense is that they're going to vote to delay sports until the 24th of August, that would be for the start of preseasons?
No, uh, we actually play um, uh, I, I'm not sure if the Central League plays. I think we actually have football starting certainly um at, at that time. Mrs. Buckman, do not, do we not begin football uh at the end of? You've been to more of our football games.
Usually, the preseason games, the preseason games are usually outside of the Central League, but the games do start before the start of the school year.
Yeah.
All right, so currently, our current position is that our schools' preseasons would just continue as currently scheduled?
I'm sorry, can I just interrupt? We're actually not um- We're actually not um, we don't have a recommendation, I believe, on athletics yet as part of the board. And so, you know, I mean, I appreciate the interest, but the I'm hoping to keep the focus um on what we're voting on this evening. And I don't think we have, I I think we're hearing Superintendent Copeland thinking about what his recommendation is. But I don't believe we have one at this time.
No.
Is that accurate?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Peter, do you have any other questions you want to ask? Or I'll come back.
No.
But is there another one? Okay.
Go ahead.
Thanks. I believe it's moved finger.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Lucy.
I was looking at my list of questions.
Yeah.
They just keep popping up. Um. We have a number of parents who have concerns. We I know we you you mentioned the childcare and the childcare summit. But I want to, I would like to hear a little bit more about how this, how the remote plan and even how how the remote plan addresses issues of equity better than a hybrid plan would. If that makes sense.
I think I think my sense is that the remote plan provides more continuity of instruction, less asynchronous instruction than the hybrid. And I think that promotes um more equity than a hybrid.
And with and with a hybrid plan, we could potentially have parents pooling together with means, hiring other people, whereas others.
I have a sense that'll happen anyway.
Right, right.
Well, Jay, it looks like Shayna Kalish is next.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. So um the board has also received a great deal of feedback from the community, wondering why TE and Radnor have been able to move forward with hybrid education. And Lower Marion is recommending a full virtual open opening. Um, Superintendent Copeland, could you just um address for us again, um, your reasoning why a plan that, similar to what they've done, possibly their half-day, um would not work for us? And speak to some or any of the discussions you've had within about administrations of nearby districts?
Well, TE is going virtual um in the beginning of the year. Um, and um, excuse me?
I said that was my mistake. I I was just reading through our comments.
And um and Havaford is is going to switch from um hybrids to virtual, I believe, tomorrow. Um, we looked at the AV schedule or the half-day AM and PM schedule that Radnor is using. And we found with our transportation situation, we would be losing too much instructional time trying to make that work. So um we we we're about twice the size of that district, both in sheer numbers and sheer square miles. So it simply didn't work for us. We would have to have cut so much transportation, so much instructional time, or extended the elementary school day. So that's why we didn't look at that uh as that model.
So Radnor is our only neighboring district that's, assuming Havaford switches tomorrow, Radnor is our only neighboring district that is doing an in-person open of any kind?
Well, I don't I don't really have a lot of contact with the Delaware County superintendents. The only ones I do have contact with on a regular basis are Havaford and Radnor. Um, and um I I know that Upper Marion is uh going virtual. Uh, I think Colonial is going to switch uh tomorrow. Uh, I believe Wissahickin is, some other. I mean, it's about fourteen out of out of the districts. Um, I mean, we're not doing it because, other than that. Uh, but to answer your question, um.
No, I was just trying to gather that. So we're we're not an outlier by any 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 stretch of the imagination if we elect to go full virtual.
No.
Thank you.
Um, uh, Lucy Klein?
Hi, thank you. That's actually a um, not a lead-in to my question, but a lead-in to um. Uh, I know that the Mr. Copeland has been meeting with the superintendents in Montgomery County for um twice a week uh throughout this entire um COVID situation. I wanted to just add that um I've been participating in a, um, there's a Pennsylvania School Board Association, PSBA, um, and they have weekly calls with uh board leadership from um. It's not just Montgomery County. It's sort of the southeastern part of um the state, but a little bit bigger than that. Um, and I just to share in terms of schools that are doing hybrid versus um virtual. Um, the vast majority of schools in Montgomery County are going virtual. Um, many, several of them did originally vote to do a hybrid, but in the last few weeks are switching over to virtual. Um, I believe Colonial was one of them. Um, uh, in terms of Chester County, uh, they're about half and half in terms of which ones are doing virtual and which ones are going um hybrid. And several of those as well originally voted for um hybrid programs. But according to their board leadership, they are within the next week or two um likely voting to switch to virtual. Um, and Delaware County did have more programs, more school districts that were planning to be um hybrid. And they are definitely still more Delaware County schools are hybrid. Um, but they are slowly, um, some of them are slowly um looking to move to virtual. So I just wanted to share sort of um that not only is the administration working with other superintendents and administrators within um our area, but also the school board um is represented um in those conversations as well. Um, I wanted to follow up or sort of talk a little bit more um about the return to school and the opportunity to do. So I share the concern of several other. Um, I think, well, for sure, several other, but I would think probably all of us in terms of wanting to be back in the school buildings and wanting in-person um uh, you know, being able to provide an in-person um educational opportunity. Um, so I wanted to ask about the um Montgomery County of Health. Um, they have recommendations or guidelines um around the school exclusion requirements. And I wanted to ask Ms. Quillen about her comfort level with where they um, what they are um recommending in terms of, if you have a positive test, if you have with symptoms or without symptoms, how long you need to stay out of school. Um, there's a part of that around close con- close contact to someone that's positive. Um, and then also to try, if you were traveling out of state to um areas with high COVID rates. Um, and those guidelines are something that you are comfortable with, um, knowing that they may, you know, that that is a county um document and that's something that they could change. Um, but it it gave me comfort, comfort not quite the right word, um, to know that there is very specific guidelines of of what we should be doing as a school district um should a student or a teacher test positive. Um, and I just wanted to note the comfort level because that can be one metric that we can be looking at or considering um so that we can make that move back to school.
Right. Um, thank you, Lucy. We we never make those decisions about exclusion or isolation independent of the Office of Public Health. Um, that direction and that guidance always comes from either the Pennsylvania Department of Health or in those counties that do have a uh Office of Public Health, uh like Montgomery County does, comes directly with from them. Um, I saw all the information that they issued um maybe about three weeks ago. I expect we'll see some revisions to that as um CDC kind of changed um some of their um guidance around that. And and that is the job of the state and local health departments to follow the guidance of the CDC and interpret that for specific communities. So I am very comfortable with that uh guidance and direction from the Health Department, whether it's for the exclusion of individual students or staff or the recommendation of testing uh or also um their recommendation to close a school or a particular group of schools. Uh, again, that's never an independent decision that's done with their direction or guidance and in collaboration with health services and the superintendent. So during a typical school year, when we have pertussis and things, other reportable, communicable diseases, I have daily contact with the Health Department. And um I anticipate at least daily contact with the Health Department uh this year. So that um relationship is extremely important. That's a critical relationship. And we do look to them for that um specific guidance, and we do implement it. So I am comfortable with their guidance around exclusion and isolation periods and testing.
And as a school district, it would be our responsibility that if we knew a student or a staff member tested positive, that we would share with the county. Is, do they have the same responsibility back towards us?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Uh, they, once they identify someone that is a staff member or a student in our district, they call me. Um, that is, they keep the name of the person. We keep it confidential, but we assist them. Their responsibility is contact tracing, but we assist them with that because um we are very familiar with the school environment. So that's a collaborative effort as well. But um we, if we get notification from a parent or a student of a positive case, we would call them right away and they would work to confirm or um say that that's not accurate and then uh help us with um the, what we need to do in response to that case.
So that's a piece of the contact tracing that we can control or can help move forward as a as sort of a positive. Um, so I I think Ms. Ackman had mentioned earlier or someone about um the county saying that um they now have a ninety-some percent um compliance with with contact tracing. Do you know if that is of the people that are I that are part of the con- like, is every single person who tests positive part of that contact tracing? Or do they only do contact tracing for some individuals that are tested?
Uh, they should be doing contact tracing for everyone that tests positive that is a resident of Montgomery County. So I'm not sure where that figure came from. Um, there, you know, there's disputed figures depending on on who you ask. Um, but I think the fact that they're just, the state of Pennsylvania is just hiring another thousand contact tracers goes to show that um we need to step up those efforts. So um I think it's going in the right direction. But you're absolutely correct that we do assist them in that role.
And does that responsibility stay with Montgomery County? So there was an example of um a coach that I think was in Montgomery County but was coaching outside of Montgomery County. So if that, then, you know, so there's the Montgomery County piece of it, but then do they continue with that contact tracing, sort of like spidering out outside of Montgomery County? Would that then transfer to a different county?
That's that's what should happen. And that's what I was referring to earlier. If one of our residents gets tested in another county, then that county is responsible for notifying the Montgomery County Health Department and and vice versa. Um, there is a little bit of fragmentation there that they need to coordinate efforts a little better. Uh, I'm more confident in the cases where they're tested in Montgomery County. And then I think that contact tracing is happening um to a larger degree than when the testing is done in a different county.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Maureen.
Uh, yeah, next, I'd like to follow up on something that was addressed earlier as it relates to um training and preparedness of our teachers. And particularly given the fact that we are, you know, the recommendation is for a full hybrid model. Um, and I know we talked about the uh training that was done early in the summer um and the the PLCs, but Dr. Caddius, I, and I I bring it up because in just the emails that I've read over the last two days um from teachers that are feeling still woefully unprepared um or or just not confident, right? And and because there is a a preponderance of folks that are looking to the uh LMSD at home as the preferred tool, I just want to hear a little bit more um from you in terms of how we are going to be assessing and assisting our teachers in in being prepared to deliver um, you know, come September.
So so a couple of, a couple of things. Um, one is dedicating a lot of that August time to certainly all of the protocols and things that have to be in place related to safety. Um, you know, if if teachers are back. Um, the the majority of the time, if we're focused on the remote learning, can be on the remote learning. Um, and if we're we're bringing teachers in to work as PLCs to go through some of the resources, that's one piece of it. Um, there are a lot of the remote learning uh tools that we, you know, uh in a in a very targeted and purposeful way made sure were uh recorded in the spring. So we had these trainers came in and each of them has left behind um resources. And and the resources that that we um uh agreed on with them include, you know, if you if you learn something in the spring and, you know, for all of us, if you do something one time and you don't have to do it again for a while, it's easy to forget, right? So so, for example, setting up your Google Classroom, trying to do something in Blackboard. Um, you know, what we what we're working on is making sure these tools are available and broken down by the skill. So, for example, Kiker Learning and Associates um came in and did some trainings for our teachers um in Google Classroom, left us um very specific targeted um uh tools that the teacher can go back in and they don't have to re-watch the entire training. The video is by the skill, by the thing that they're trying to do. So that's one piece of it. You know, another is that we have some in-house trainers who have just been phenomenal and they did some work in the summer school. Um, they, um, you know, Laura Vogel, Jen Goldberg and Beth Hampton have just been terrific resources for the staff. Some of what they've done in summer school is they're creating the shell for teachers. Uh, and what I mean by that is, you know, if there's a Google Classroom shell where we want common and aligned information, um, some of that may be created for them already so that it can be copied into their classroom. So things like that, that, you know, teachers who who are focusing on the the instructional design, you know, the preferences, focus on your instructional design where we can help you with the setup. There are people who are going to help prepare that for you. Um, the professional development team is setting up a list of competencies. And, you know, when you when you think about, you know, any profession, uh, you know, you need to, you need to advance your skills just as a professional responsibility. And our teachers did that exponentially this past spring. I mean, they were amazing. Um, but to narrow that down and help them focus, this team has broken it down into a set of competencies that will help them launch the year successfully. So if they're trying to figure out, what's my next step to demonstrate my skill, apply my skill, it's going to be broken down in such a way that make sure you know how to do X. And if you're not sure how to do X, here is a tool, a resource, a video, a professional who can help you with that. So it's going to be really broken down in such a concrete sequential way that for a teacher who's coming in with, we just learned a lot and I'm not sure where to start, um, it's really broken down in ways that help them really just take, put one foot in front of the other and make sure you're ready. So some of that planning has, uh, teams have really given a lot of thought to making sure that when teachers come back, um, the teachers who who are ready to hit the ground running can hit the ground running. And the teachers who need a little bit of scaffolding, a little bit of support, a little bit of a directed pathway will also very much have that.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Ackman?
Uh, thank you. Um, Mr. Copeland, I know we don't agree on everything, but I think one thing we can agree on is the government response has been really slow. And so um given the challenges, maybe with Pennsylvania in particular, Montgomery County and their testing not being as robust as we'd like to see, um, would you support um us reaching out to other school districts in the county or adjacent to us who are probably facing the same challenge and working with one of the many now available testing services so that we could guarantee faster testing for our school population? And as a consortium, like six bipartisan governors just announced, we could probably make it much more affordable to our community. Um, I think many parents like me are motivated to move much faster than the government right now because our kids.
because our kids' education really depends on it. And so, um, and by that, I also mean the whole child, their social, their mental health, their physical health. Um, and my other idea is if we feel like the contact tracing is not robust enough at the county level, there's a lot of resources to for free through Johns Hopkins and other places, train people to be contact tracers. I'm sure we could recruit an army of volunteers, of local retirees or even other people that we could pay to provide that service for us. So I'm interested in your um, appetite to maybe work together with our school community in the region to solve these problems because they're urgent and I, I really do feel like we're not going to be serving our kids if we can't get them in school buildings at some point this year. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we're, we're, um, we're trying to do that within our associations in terms of the, um, uh, and yeah, well, I'll work with anybody when I get, you know, I write our, I've written some of our representatives and told them how disappointed I am and the fact that they're sitting on the sidelines when it comes to childcare issues. Uh, I've asked that um, uh, that we, that they do something about the licensure of childcare facilities so that we can get, you know, more of that over time. I'm open for that. In terms of the contact tracing, uh, I leave that to Terry if, if.
There was a um, a system for recruiting volunteers. Um, I personally know a lot of uh, retired nurses and physicians that volunteered for that. They were set to begin training in September um, and they didn't start it during the summer because they felt too many people would be on vacation is what the state said. But they abruptly changed course and got these emergency funds to um, contract with these two companies. Now, to be a contact tracer, you do have to be employed as a public health person. So it can't be, you know, we can't do that on our own and so forth, we can assist. But they um, they nixed the volunteer um, effort for whatever reason and are going, now they're recruiting the paid um, personnel, but they are saying that the people that were on that original volunteer list can be paid to do that.
Okay, so maybe there's some opportunity. And so Bob, if I reach out to our school board peers in Montgomery County and maybe Havertown, some Delaware County, you, you would be open to some consortium around the testing, depending on what we find?
Sure.
Okay, I'll, I'll take that as a um, a personal charge to see what I can deliver um, to the school board and the community.
Thank you. Um, Lucy Klein?
Um, thank you. I wanted to um, ask, uh, there's a lot of concern in the community about um, students that weren't engaged. And, and we've already talked about this uh, quite a bit tonight, but students that weren't engaged in the online virtual learning in the spring. Um, and I know that um, a number of students within the district are participating in the summer, the virtual summer school program. Um, I believe it's about a thousand students. And actually, among the many um, community comments that we've received, there was a letter from a student, an elementary aged um, student who was participating in that summer program. And she had a really positive um, uh, reception to it. She basically said she did not enjoy the um, school in the spring. It was a hard, you know, she wasn't enjoying the Zoom and it wasn't a, a good fit for her, but that she started this summer program, which I believe started about two weeks ago and that it's been really positive and she's really enjoying it. Um, so I was wondering if you could speak a little bit to how many teachers are involved with that and how that um, program will be used to um, sort of inform moving forward um, if we do go virtual and um, and also, you know, there's a, the, the belief or concern that, that even if we start hybrid, that at some point in the fall, we will probably sort of move back and forth between virtual and hybrid. Um, so I'm wondering if you can speak to how that will help inform um, sort of specific um, feedback we've gotten from the summer school program.
Yeah, I, I don't know if I have my list, I'm looking for the list of teachers. Um, I was, I was more involved in this, to be perfectly honest with you, when we were trying to staff it in the beginning. Uh, so I can't, can't find the list of teachers. I don't know, I don't know if you know the number, Jen. That's really Dr. Pratt's program.
It is. I know we have over a thousand students and at least in elementary, the class size was around fifteen. So it's a, I mean, if, if that's the number throughout, it would be around, I just did the quick math, it'd be around sixty-five.
We frankly, we frankly got more uh, high school students than I had anticipated and we were scrambling in that area to get teachers for that. And that was, that was one thought of the program. The first thought, of course, was to try and uh, support kids um, who, who the spring was not a success for. And the other thought was to take some of the learnings that teachers had done at the end of June and put them into immediate practice. We thought if we put them into immediate practice, that would give us some, some sense as to where we're going um, forward. Now, I kept track of it the first week. Uh, I, I actually haven't um, uh, had a chance to talk with Dr. Pratt this week to see where we are. I know she was putting together a survey. Do you know, Jen?
Uh, I know she's, she is putting uh, uh, materials together. She actually just texted eighty-five teachers and twenty-eight. Yeah, um, so, so yeah, survey. And she's also been um, connected with the essentializing learning subgroup. Uh, so the conversation throughout has been what are we learning and what can we take away from it? Um, and we're also going to follow up with uh, the RAM program uh, to talk about some things that have worked as well, um, where strategies have been in place.
And will there be, or could there be an opportunity for those teachers that are involved in the RAM program to provide sort of technical assistance for peer-to-peer um, training with?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're hoping that that will have produced uh, a real cadre of, of experience that we can, that we can draw. We also know that, and I think I mentioned this, that we want to be able to support uh, parents and caregivers uh, with the technology um, uh, professional development, if you will, in terms of, of that so that they can be better able to, to help uh, their students. We've learned a lot from the spring uh, that we're, that we're really hoping uh, is going to bear fruit.
Thank you.
Um, I'm going to take, sorry, yeah, I'm going to take one uh, last question from Miss Finger.
Thank you. Do you feel that one week is enough time to get these teachers to go look at the videos and find these, the skeletons, uh, Google Classrooms and, and Blackboards? And it, it, they may not have been working in the summer.
I think that the week is going to be yes, to the extent that um, when I pair that with what we did uh, in, in the spring. Um, but it won't stop there. Like any staff development, um, it's going to be ongoing. Uh, and, and that's the way staff development, you know, you know that, how, how, how that works. So that won't be, that won't be a, an end.
Okay, um, thank you. Um, I, my um, colleagues have asked um, many, many questions that I think have covered um, all the areas that I would be also interested in asking about in terms of health and safety and equity and of course, the education um, of our children. Um, I do just have one question I'd like to ask. Um, I know that um, we have many students who have IEPs, GIEPs and 504s and that it's a very diverse population and it's a large population um, of our district. And I've, I've been hearing all these details about um, how we've been, we have all these different uh, committees that have been working on plans um, for the uh, uh, fall for opening. And so I just wanted to hear maybe a, um, a little bit more about how that planning was happening. Was that integrated in the other uh, committees? Was it separate, probably both, if you could speak to that?
Yeah, so, so actually a little bit of both, right? Like, so we have had representatives of students services and special education on all of the committees. So it is woven within and we have across all of the different possible types of opening been thinking about all of those groups of students that you mentioned. And as you indicated and just, you know, for the, the good of everyone watching, I mean, it's about forty percent of our student population that has some kind of specialized plan, whether it's a 504, an IEP or a GIEP. There's also a level of planning that has to happen that's highly specialized, especially as it relates for, for, for our special education students. And so there's another level of planning outside of that committee work that has to happen so that we can be thoughtful and deliberate about how we make sure the needs of all of those students are being met, whether they're in person, whether they're, whether they're remote or, or whether they elect to choose LMSD at home or LMVA. So I would say it's, it has to be, to be both and has been both actively.
Thank you very much. Um, so at this time, um, what we're going to do now is we're going to take fifteen minutes for residents and taxpayers to provide your comments or using the chat feature. Um, it'll, it'll open in a moment. Um, we need you to, just as we would if you were in person, please include your name and the town or borough you live in the district. Um, and then the solicitor will read each comment up to two minutes. So in a moment, you're going to see a clock that will count down the fifteen minutes and um, at that point, uh, we will return. So um, thank you and we'll be back in fifteen minutes.
Okay, I just, I, I do need to add in, you need to write the question with your name. You're not going to get the opportunity to speak. You're, you need to write the question with your name and where you live in the district so that that can be read. Thank you.
Uh, welcome back, everyone. Um, at this time, our solicitor, uh, Mr. Ken Ruse will begin to read um, the uh, comments that were provided in the chat.
Thank you. Just making sure everybody can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. We'll start, first comment is from Lori Lewis of Penn Valley. Question, how will these closures affect SAT testing dates? The next one, um, Jeff Webb, um, Haberford, or 104 Sunset, excuse me, Haberford, PA. Superintendent Copeland does not understand what positivity rate means as shown by his dismissal of Peter Lee's excellent point on this topic. Yet an improvement in this data point is a cornerstone of the superintendent's criteria to return to school. How can the eighty percent of survey respondents who want their kids back in the classroom believe that a return to the classroom is being considered in good faith when the superintendent has displayed a lack of appreciation for this fundamental concept? Next is Mika Sneed. I appreciate the constructive questions the board has asked tonight. These questions have prompted much more informative responses from the administration than their presentation. In particular, Director Atdomin's questions for specifics prompted some disconcerting responses that indicate actual planning still hasn't begun. Superintendent has spoken about all the concerns related to in-school instruction. What are the administration's concerns about all remote instruction and how does the school district plan to account for them? The administration has talked a lot about what they feel is lacking in leadership from the governor's office, PDE in Montgomery County. And the administration detail what proactive steps they have taken to engage with these agencies and what, if anything, they are waiting on in the form of resources or technical assistance. As residents, we should all feel responsibility to ensure our school districts has everything it needs, yet I've seen no calls for advocacy or action. Next is Ken Chotner of Winco, Winwood. Do not approve this plan to stay closed. Seventy-one percent of parents want their kids in school now and they vote. They will not vote for any member who approves this plan to fail our children. Moreover, the superintendent has no right to tell parents what risks are acceptable for their kids. The kids have been playing sports all summer. They can go to school like they're in other, like, they can go to school like they are in other districts. Based upon the superintendent's answers to Mr. Lee's questions, it is apparent that teachers do not want to return to school. That is unacceptable. Any teacher who is risk averse can take family medical leave. Otherwise, go to work like those parents who have to support their families. Moreover, there are online charters who have been doing this for years and have a proven track record. If you approve this plan, parents will pull their kids out. Next is Rebecca Cronin Ardmore. If we do not go back to brick and mortar, what happens to specials? Next is, um, the next with a full name is Uta Watts Winwood. Has board hired consultants to support virtual platform for teachers? Now we have a, um, Maria Pia Olivero. Please provide more details on the plans for special ed students with extreme special needs and multiple disabilities. Neighboring districts are all providing in-person opportunities for these students or at least providing PCAs or instructional aids who go to the students' homes to help them access the curriculum online. Next is Jamie Bassman. Can you specifically spell out whether you are committing to providing in-person instruction for all students in need of full-time and supplementary special education, regardless, regardless of whether virtual opening is starting in the beginning of September? Next, Leanne Glancy Gladwin. Are your teachers in unity about the recommended plan? To what degree are they in agreement that opening virtually is the right decision? Next is Anissa Dungy Ballack Kinwood. Will transportation be provided for private school students if a virtual plan is implemented? Next is Jill Ringel, Dan Ringold, Marion Station. Is easy testing going to be part of any opening strategy? The only reason my hospital functions is because we have rapid and easy testing. Next is Lauren Schwartz Ballack Kinwood. How is Laura Marion going to figure out if students in the younger grades need an IEP, GIEP or 504? Next is Robin Knight of Winwood. Uh, in addition to getting up to speed on virtual learning, are the teachers still doing the in-person anti-bias training the week prior to school start? Next is Christina Chang, Penn Valley. I polled Laura Marion residents today who took COVID tests in the last two weeks. Um, Mainline Health provide one to two day test results. Penn Radnor provides one day test results. Chop provides one day test results. Jefferson provides one day test results. PM Pediatrics in Winwood provides two-day test results. My name is Amy Battler from Marion Station. I'm wondering if you can tell me why board members are still meeting remotely. Until school board members feel comfortable enough to sit together in a room with the public in attendance, encourage you not to make a hypocritical decision to bring students and teachers back into the classroom. Please do not expect the teachers and students to adhere to a lower bar of safety than you are willing to accept yourself. Thank you. Next is Abby Cohen. How does the district plan to fill vacancies for all the teachers who will need FMLA COVID leave due to childcare issues with their own children? So many other districts, virtual, and teachers do not need to report to buildings and young children. A question from, uh, from Debbie Miller. What are you going to do about substitutes? Next is from Carmen Sturm. Does the experience and data from Europe's success in sending young children below high school age back to the school? Excuse me, does the experience and data from Europe's success in sending young children uh, below high school age back to school impact the decision by the, by the school district? Next is Petra Douglas, Laura Marion, parent of two. Please approve the recommended plan. Next is from Jennifer Soden. Sorta Rich, hello and thank you for all of your efforts. My comments and questions are, one, how come at the secondary level the specials will be retained for students who remain in LMSD at home when classes resume in person slash hybrid, but not for elementary? And then it trails off. Next, Katie O'Gara Ardmore, one in high school, two in middle, one in elementary. Question, how does the decision to education plan affect sports teams? Next is Jeanette Fisher Belmont Hills. On the elementary level, in the spring, the counselor would come to the morning meetings as the check-in. If the teachers have no real interaction with their students, how do these check-in really benefit the students? Next, Udi Watts Winwood. Comprehensive training and virtual communicate virtual curriculum building has been provided to the teachers and staff. Next is Dee Dee Litvin. I appreciate all the thoughtful work that has gone into the plans for the school year. While it is really challenging and sad to think about starting the year remotely, I think it's clearly the most responsible decision based on the health and safety of our students, teachers, and the entire community. Next is Jessica Most from Penn Valley. I want to applaud the superintendent for taking this difficult position and choosing to recommend full virtue virtual for the beginning of the school year. We are just starting to get a handle on this pandemic in our area, and it would be a mistake to let our guard down too early. I hope the school can find creative ways to help all students and families learn safely this fall. Nicole Robinson, Winwood. I have two new sixth graders and a new third grader. Virtual schooling was very hard for us. I would like to hear more specific unpacking of the plan to address student wellness directly. I would like to hear more specific details and action steps. Morning meeting for my second grader comprised of listening to his teacher and read a book for thirty minutes. These were not wellness checks. He struggled, and we live in a happy house. Please provide more specific actions in regard to this. Next is Aaron Shaw Bala Kinwood, rising kindergartner to working parents. I need more information on your plans for childcare. I really do not want to opt for private K, but I need a safe place for my kid to learn, and it needs not to be in my house. There is a false equivalence between parents working from home and being able to supervise very young children for remote learning while working from home. It just does not work. Please help me understand how you can support working parents. Believe this, next one is already Kirsten already read. I support, next is Mandy Nace. I support the administration's recommendation to delay the start of in-person learning. However, I'd like to go on record to oppose the superintendent's insistence to send teachers to school during a time when the governor is mandating remote work and teachers will have enough to prepare for without the stress and difficulty going into buildings. I'm disappointed in the superintendent's attitude in addressing the can issue and the concerns of parents. Next is Anna Weiss. I am a pediatric emergency, excuse me, I am a pediatric emergency medicine physician in Philadelphia. Regarding worries about opening in the absence of extensive testing, we know from our experience this spring that even if a child is known to be positive with COVID nineteen, any healthcare provider who came into close contact with them, as long as they were masked, is considered to have an extremely low-risk exposure, and that provider is able to continue working. This should pertain to students and their teachers as well. As long as both the infected child and his or her classmates are not appropriately masked, then the cohort whole cohort does not need to be kept out of school pending a test. Testing should be pulled and not individually directed. This will allow for significantly more efficient testing of large number of students of children, pull the samples for an entire classroom, and only run individual samples if the pool is positive. Next is Finley Shapiro. Last week, there was a poll about whether parents would enroll their children in LMVA or LMSD at home. The polling time is not over yet, but it was said that the preliminary result would be available at tonight's meeting. It seems that the board members have seen them, but I haven't seen anything public about the preliminary results. What are the results so far, and if possible, can you break them down by grade? Next, Matthew Tinker Ardmore. When are we considering the mental health needs of our children? How much are we considering the effects of sending children to school amidst a pandemic and the trauma they may face as they potentially transmit this virus to a family member, community member, teacher, et cetera, as a result? Next is Julia Rousch. Winwood, I appreciate the pushing particularly by Lori Ackman on a specific testing and contract tracing requirements in order for the kids to be in school. I am in favor of putting our student and teacher safety first, but we also need to know what it will take to get our kids to return to school. I also appreciate Lori's idea to take matters into our own hands. Government isn't going to help us, and we have the means to do so in LM. Next is from Roger Alia Diaz. The only way in which special education students with severe needs can learn is in person. Neither of the considerations about hybrid and all remote models that were presented apply to these students. Online or hybrid are not FAP for them. Next is from Brooke Workman. Parent of two LMSD students at Belmont Hills. After listening to the presentation and engaging in my own research, I feel strongly that a return to school in person would benefit the students greatly, and the benefits outweigh the cons. I don't think the students can adequately learn and engage in the necessary socialization and SEL learning during online learning. Next, Joseph Kaufman Penn Valley. How realistic is it to expect a kindergartner to learn the skills necessary to be successful in a virtual setting? Kindergarten is such an important year to develop key skills to be successful in the years to follow. My fear is our kids will lose out on those skills and fall behind. My second question is, when can we expect a date on students returning to school? There's a lot of planning parents need to do around schedules and work, and this uncertainty makes it very difficult to develop this plan. Next is Lawrence Cherap. I'm a parent of two Laura Marion High School students and strongly support going back to all virtual. Next is Norman Ostro Winwood Superintendent Copeland. Please enumerate the list of things that need to happen for schools to open in October. Please be specific. Next is Abby Cohen. There are many mold and ventilations issues at school, and teachers do not feel safe in their rooms, even pre-COVID. This is a huge issue that needs to be taken into consideration. Next, Brian Hirsch Winwood. What percentage of students have already selected one of the virtual options? And why not allow some sort of in-person model for those who want it, given that those who want all remote will have that option? Next, Maggie Ross to me. I'm still confused about LMSD at home. As I understand, if we choose this option, we will be forced to stay in that program even if schools reopen. This concerns me because with LMBA, we can choose to stay in the program for one semester at a time. I think it would be better if you gave us the same option as LMBA. Next is Seema Pai Bala Kinwood. Thank you to the LMSD team for all the hours of work put on the plan. I support the recommendation made by the superintendent and urge the board to support it. Next is all these others have already commented. Josh Baylene, can LM-approved community partner educational activities as curriculum in an LM-driven hybrid model? Teachers can work with LMSD and community partners as curriculum, especially kindergarten through five on Zoom non-Zoom days. Next is Nyla Guesser Bala Kinwood. My understanding is that the current plan for remote learning is that the students at the high school level would be following their regular schedule with the teachers reading, teaching from the classroom. Is that correct? Second, at the elementary level before fifth grade, some GIP accommodation is done by pulling students out of the classroom during class time. For example, math unit pullouts. How do you plan to accommodate that in the remote learning mode? Next, Aiden Kalner. Can you explain the future of performing arts at school like the Heriton Theater Company and LM Players? Next, Hugh Ehrenberg. I'm concerned that the metrics for any person is, I am concerned that the metrics for any in-person instruction are so nebulous, so arbitrary, and even when met, testing with rapid turnaround, adequate contract tracing, low incidence in the population, that we are being led down a road that will never allow it. You've continued to conflate positive test rates with population incident, which is flatly incorrect. Testing is now available with three-hour turnaround, and the DOH Department of Health says contract tracing is adequate in the county. The goals have been met, voting the proposal down is required. Next is Elizabeth Aldworth. I am frankly aghast at the superintendent's recommendation in the course of the presentation. I did not hear one cogent argument why LMSD cannot open its doors. I am hearing why it is hard, why it is difficult, why it is not the norm. This is not can't, this is won't. Has any consideration been given to the literal financial ruin that this will cause lower Marion families? Dual-income parents work very hard to meet their mortgage payment, grocery bills, and their very significant school taxes. This plan forces parents to lose their jobs, to stay home to educate their children. That means missed mortgage payments, bankruptcy, non-payment of school taxes, foreclosures, and food insecurity in our neighborhood. And the list goes on. And on top of that, the October date is aspirational with no end in sight. A proposal made with no metrics also has no metrics to determine when this will end. This is further exacerbated by the fact that wealthy families with one, and that's it. Justin Bate. My name is Justin Bate, and I attend Laura Marion High School. How can you endure transportation to and from athletic events and practices if school goes virtual? I think he meant to say, how can you ensure transportation? Next is Millie Shundler. This is a comment and a question. We really like the virtual LMSD at home program that the superintendent is proposing. Makes a lot of sense and reduces anxiety of going back to school in the current environment for our family. And things kids getting taught by their teachers virtually is a good compromise. Next is Jennifer Kelly. Hi, I have an MS student, middle school student at Welsh Valley, and a high school student at Heriton. There are rumors circulating that there will be a teacher shortage if the board adopts a hybrid or in-person model due to teachers taking advantage of the COVID-specific paid leave program. Can you confirm or deny whether this poses a risk to LMSD? Next is Larry Ward, Larry and Stephanie Ward Bala Kinwood. The current plan has no parameters to move to hybrid learning. This seems to be a significant unknown and makes the plan incomplete. This plan should be rejected until these parameters are in place. Otherwise, this is simply a capitulation to remote learning for the entire year most likely. Next is Allison Belpone. The Gladwin Gladwin. While we fully disagree with Copeland, the Superintendent Copeland's recommendations to go virtual, fully virtual, and his comprehension of the medical data available, if this is the path approved, we would highly recommend that children in elementary school be kept in the same group as last year. This will assist with social interaction and the mental well-being of our children versus a completely new teacher and students that have no connectivity to others other than through a screen. Next, Nicole Diddy. What is the scenario that children will be allowed back to in-school learning besides a vaccine or zero infection rate? Next is Athanasia Polycronopoulou. It is still not clear to me why we do not have already planned orientations for new students and some in-person socializing meetings for them. If we do not do this now, then they will start at a new school, and the weather permits outdoor gatherings, we never will. It would be nice to have some small group orientation followed by an outdoor gathering of the entire class so that the students can see their new school and meet their classmates and teachers. Next is Kimberly Neff. Montgomery County recently partnered with a testing provider who is able to provide testing within thirty-six hours. This same provider is also able to provide testing for schools onsite at Laura Marion Schools, pickup tests every day if needed, guarantee results in thirty-six hours. Is this fast enough to open our schools? If not, what is the required turnaround for testing? Please be specific so we can confirm when schools can open. Are you also, are you aware that there's also funding from the Commonwealth and the county for school districts for testing? Next is Maureen Hansbury Narberth. What is the platform software for LMSD at home? Next, next is Carol Ann Carol Ann Goswiler Ardmore. First, thank you for putting health and safety first as the top priority for LMSD. My question is, upon our eventual return to LMSD, can we ensure that all students will be required to wear a mask? There has been talk in LMSD and other districts and from the Department of Ed itself of allowing children to opt out of mask wearing when within six feet or to opt out or to up or to opt into wearing a virtually ineffective face shield in lieu of a mask. Is LMSD willing to commit to requiring and enforcing only proven PPE to keep our community truly safe? Next, Jose Ramirez, excuse me, Krista Ramirez Ardmore. Is there updated guidance slash sense of how many children will be able to be taken to school by their parents? Are parents, children obligated to get COVID tests when they ill if they're managing symptoms at home? How will you be able to monitor children who may be candidates for gifted testing in a virtual environment? Are there any special plans for kindergartners since it will be their first time starting in public school or for some school at all if they didn't go to preschool? Thank you all for your thoughtful and diligent work and discussions. Next, Jill Bronner Gladwin. What is the plan if student or teacher or bus driver or support staff dies? Is there grief counseling available? Next, Amber Selway Haveford. I would like to for further clarification regarding why the district is able to accommodate two virtual options at this time. However, does not appear to be able to communicate any hybrid scenario. Please do not hypothesize. Provide statistical data that supports this decision. Our school taxes do not reflect this recommendation. Next, Helen Young. If we choose the hybrid model once LMSD gets off one hundred percent remote virtual, would transportation options include bus transportation become available for all students who choose that option? Next is from Trenan McQuillan Bala Kinwood. Could you please strongly consider the comment Peter Lee made in reference to positive COVID rates do not reflect the true population sample that may enter a school building? It will be much lower and gives much greater confidence for safe entry back to schools. Next, Heather Bat. Two students at Laura Marion High School. Is imperative to offer some clubs and activities aside from sports to our kids, no matter the method of delivery? For students entering into a high school and middle school must have in-person interactive opportunity with their teachers prior to school. And please think about how to make senior years special if we are fully virtual. This is a culmination socially, athletically, and academically that matters deeply to our kids. Next, Reina Campbell Ardmore. My question is, how is lower Marion, how is LMSD at home different from the education they would receive if I didn't enroll them? Also, my son has an IEP. I found out his case manager won't be his case manager anymore if I enroll him in LMSD at home. Will he have a case manager? How will all that be handled? I do not want the children to return to school when it is safe, but with little or no centralized leadership around handling of the pandemic, it is difficult to know if the information being disseminated regarding the virus can be trusted. If I enroll them in LMSD at home, am I giving up the opportunity to have my children attend in-school learning even when it becomes safe? Next is Myra Rosenberg, absolutely virtual at this point. Next is Sarah Holmes Ardmore. Does the district plan to refund a portion of resident school taxes paid given that to children in the district are not getting access to the full resources and opportunities our tax dollars were intended to fund? Next is the Switzer's. But no on this plan. Superintendent Copeland has provided no metric for opening schools and is using outdated data in direct conflict with information provided today at the Monaco Health Briefing. Superintendent Copeland keeps saying three days for the new testing service, which is not correct. It's thirty-six hours. They're misusing the term positivity rate to mean that when kids enter the building, three percent of them could end up positive. The positive positivity rate is for people who get tested. Our positivity rate is excellent, in the words of Valar Kouch. Pennsylvania for Pennsylvania Department of Health and the Montgomery Department of Health have safety plans for a reason. They believe school can run safely if the safety steps are followed, distancing cohorts, mask use, et cetera. Please do not approve this plan when September may be the only hope for in-person for little ones before the shutdown. Approve hybrid at least for K to three. Next is Arian Jerkowski Winwood. If we do reopen schools at some point and one or more student staff test positive for COVID in a single school, would all LMSD schools need to close? Or is there a possibility that just one school would close and the remaining ones would continue on within-person classes? Next is Naomi Nevler. There there are conflicting reports on the infectivity of COVID in children. There is general agreement that the risk of serious morbidity or mortality among children is extremely low. How do you justify putting the children at risk for growth and social stunning when you say you have to wait the physical and medical risk, mental risk for the children? There is no physical risk for the children, and whether or not they transmit the disease is irrelevant. The only risk I see has to do with adults at risk, and there are so many options to help mitigate any teacher or other school staff who is at risk of severe COVID morbidity and mortality. Please explain to us what is this physical risk of children going back to school physically full-time? Next is Beth Pennyagua. I am concerned that the three-point-two test positivity rate repeatedly cited as a reason for virtual schools is being interpreted incorrectly. This rate represents the current percentage of Monco tests that are positive. This is not a random sample but composed of people choosing to be tested because of symptoms, exposure, or need for work and travel, creating a selection bias. This cannot be translated into forty students at Bala Kim and being COVID on the first day of school. We need random population-based testing, not happening here at this time, unfortunately, to determine this number, which is disease prevalence within the population. Juliet Greenfield Penn Valley. How will the artifacts program operate under remote or hybrid at Welsh Valley? Next, Brett Victor. It is hard for me to understand the downside of trying to get kids in in school. If it doesn't work when we are back when started, you can do virtual or hybrid. New illnesses and deaths in the community continue to fail. Getting back to school has been recommended by Dr. Fauci and various continue to fail. Getting back to school has been recommended by Dr. Fauci and various bodies of physicians and policymakers. We are extremely fortunate to have highly engaged parents and resources. We have a virtual academy for families who want that. Why do we as a community think it is worth the risk to experiment with the restaurants, bars, but not when it comes to school? Next Cecilia Waba, Hererton. Will the virtual learning be conducted within Hererton High School teachers? We are concerned about the quality of education if contracted with Montgomery County Virtual Learning Program. Also highly suggest having class numbers to mimic in-person classes so that there will be plenty of personalized questioning and answering during class. Thank you. Next Ruth Jenkins Winwood. Does the virtual curriculum address issues of race inequity in the readings of authors of various backgrounds and ethnic diversity as well as more in-depth history classes? Next is Peter Soldrich Haverford. Parent of elementary student, I would like to reemphasize the point that board member Driscoll made early on in the meeting that what we think of as in-person education, especially at the elementary level, is very different from the scenarios being mandated by CDC and the state and county recommendations. Given the many, many unanswered questions by asked by parents and even by board members, I would urge the board to give the administration this first month until April, October 5th to find satisfactory solutions to these problems. So we can reopen safely and in a way that encourages the actual advantages that an in-person experience should be able to provide. I appreciate all difficulties decisions are for everyone and thank you for your time and patience. Teresa Dennis Marion Station. I agree with the decision to open virtually. Thank you to the administration for your careful planning. When schools do open, masks should be required, not bandanas or face shields. Next Stephanie Katz Penwin. I have a student with severe concerns. Even though he will continue without losing time, he will continue to lose and will not be able to gain back this academic time. Why can't they start in September with at least half days? Remote learning does not work with a child like my son. Next is Karen. My name is Karen Crawford Gladwin. We have children at Gladwin, Welsh Valley, and Hererton. We are deeply concerned that there is a lack of clear metrics for a return to an in-person school. If we do not have that now, how will we return at all? Next John Smith Penn Valley. My comment is that it is absolutely essential that children with autism have in-person school five days a week. Virtual learning is a disaster for these children and very clearly does not live up to the legal requirements to educate them appropriately. For regular education, children who do not have in-person school, that would actually make it easier to bring in those with autism since those schools would be less crowded. People aren't putting in their names. Next David Goldsby Winwood. Peter Lee made an excellent point. Its positivity rate has been determined from a selected group, not a random sample, and is therefore much smaller than 4%. What are the specific criteria that must be satisfied for the move to hybrid? Sarah Norrie Marion Station. If our numbers in Montgomery County are low and testing at Chopin Penn where our testing takes 24 hours, I am not sure what else we need as a school district to open our schools for the children with obviously, who obviously benefit more from in-school learning than sitting behind a computer. My fear is shared by the school board is that if we open virtually this entire academic year, we'll remain virtual. The numbers in our county are low, testing can be done within 24 hours. And it's a disservice to the children to stay at home during a time when our county is doing well. Next is Rebecca Peebles. I am still confused by what will happen when high school sports with high school sports this fall. Can we presume they will not happen for tennis? For example, this season is basically over in early October. So it seems that if we are virtual, girls tennis will not be happening. We need some clarity just to make plans and prepare. Next is Jessica Spats. Thank you to all the district and board members for their thoughtful work on this complicated and nuanced reopening plan. While there cannot be one size fits all or even most solution, I encourage the board to vote in favor of the highest level of safety for our students, faculty, and community members at this uncertain time in the pandemic and vote in favor of the virtual start plan. I would love nothing more than for my children to return in person to school, but only when the testing and contact tracing are in place to support this safe return. Seems that an agreed-upon first several weeks of school via virtual learning offers greater assurance and continuity of instruction than a hybrid start, which may or may not continue for that time period. As the pandemic evolves, so should the district's instruction delivery. Please vote in favor of the virtual start plan and in support of the health and safety of the LMSD community. Jim Muller, rather than pushing off a potential opening until October, why not open schools and see how it goes after a month? The children are suffering. How on earth are kindergartners supposed to log into Zoom when they have a single working parent at home? This is an incredible hardship. Next Kelly Dar. I'm concerned that one of the main reasons cited for superintendent's recommendation is the positivity rate, but his example of 44 kids being affected at BCMS demonstrates a misunderstanding of that rate. I'm also concerned that when asked for benchmarks in the data, either testing turnaround or positivity rate or other data point that would for him indicate that it is safe to return. The superintendent does not have such benchmarks. We need accuracy and database decision making to go to feel confident in the direction we are going, even if it gets to the same result as the superintendent's recommendation. Next Hamevu Ballack Kinwood. It is virtually impossible to plan for multiple options for schooling simultaneously and expect fully developed and stellar plans for all. Similarly, it is very difficult for me as a parent to navigate the uncertainty of the current proposal, not knowing when remote would become hybrid and then in person. I appreciate the district staff diligence and extensive planning and support the recommendation to begin the school year remotely. Understandably, there are many uncertainties about the school year ahead. For our family, the significant shuffling that might take place during various times in the coming year that should we choose something other than LMBA is not something we are willing to take on. We will opt to sign our incoming first grader up for LMBA, which is not a great choice, but at least will be a consistent model which we can monitor and support. Next Kara Framan Ballack Kinwood. Students return to in-person schooling who will be monitoring and enforcing safety measures such as wearing masks over both mouth and nose and social distancing. How will the rights of those who are following safety rules be ensured? Will there be a no tolerance enforcement of these essential safety measures? If there is not strict enforcement, our children will not be safe returning to in-person learning. Next Dominic Pasqualino. Whether hybrid or virtual decision can district release teacher hybrid assignments more than typical one week before class starts so that those persons who have had to return to work and have some shot at arranging shared childcare friend requests K to 12. Next is Juan Rico. Thank you to the board for all your thoughtful questions. We hope that the proposal is approved. We appreciate the work that the reopening team has done and especially grateful for superintendent's Copeland's cautious approach and agree with proposed recommendation for school reopening. Next Cicely Reese. Seems that the panelists care more about parents with childcare issues than parents of children with health issues. If the school board proposes a hybrid option, what equivalent educational option are you going to provide for children of the district with medical conditions that may severely impact their health? Amy Clipston Brynmar. I am opposed to any plan that does not have metrics in place for resuming in-person instruction, choosing to remain virtual simply because things feel unsafe is unacceptable. Also, interestingly, I spoke with an individual today who had two of her elementary children enrolled in the summer school session. They dropped out after a few days because it was such a miserable experience for them. Next is Angela Freestone Penwin. I think some of the board members may be underestimating how quickly COVID-19 would likely spread through our schools in the current environment and how disruptive the resulting quarantines for student and staff would be to our students' education. Not to mention the unknown long-term health effects and potential loss of life. I think we need to learn from the experiences of schools that have already reopened. We all want to return to normalcy, but that just isn't possible right now. In light of that reality, we are fortunate to have a robust remote learning plan and excellent teachers who are capable of carrying it out. I think it would be extremely reckless and harmful to pursue in-person learning at this juncture when there are so many indications that it is neither safe nor practical. Thank you. Benedicto Massip. What would be the criteria allowing us to move to the hybrid plan? Can these criteria be defined and communicated to all parents, especially those who understand the risk of in-school learning, but who also appreciate all the many advantages from an academic and social standpoint for our children? Next Simon Kaufman Bellon Hills. I believe the district and board should respect the wishes of 81% of the parents and provide some in-person instruction in green. It is not unreasonable to expect elementary school age students to sit in front of a computer for six hours. I don't believe it is healthy or an effective way to teach young children. My kindergarten may have spent two hours on schoolwork in the spring and that was a challenge, only made possible through the dedication of his teacher, who had built a relationship with him and his classmates in person. Summer school has not gone well, in part, I believe, because the teacher had no chance to forge an in-person connection. I would much rather start the I would much rather the school start in person so students and teachers could meet and learn routines, then go virtual if needed for public safety. Next Anita Simon Winwood. You mentioned that you have quote grave concerns about the health and safety of our students and quote. Do you have the same concerns about the health and safety of our staff? And if so, how will you protect them? If they are in the school buildings using shared resources, shared printers, most especially shared bathrooms? Other neighbor, just other nearby districts have both students and staff reporting virtually out of respect and concern for the entire school community. To, excuse me, other nearby districts have both students and staff reporting virtually out of respect and concern for the entire school community to make sure that all are protected. I would ask that this board do the same. Next is Stacy Joseph. Are you using one platform for all virtual learning? Will teachers be self-taught or is there real learning structure in place? My understanding is teachers are not prepared at all. Transparency with students and parents desperately needs to happen. Will teachers be given the option to teach remotely and not forced to go into school? If so, can each homeschool teach their own kids through LMSD at home? Will we be, we will be using LMSD at home throughout the year and want to make sure it is set up properly with AP classes for math and physics along with some form of orchestra and electives. Using our home teachers in essence, the same as they would get in school. Please help make this a reality so our children are not left behind. Next is Carrie Lawrence Penn Valley Elementary. Some families may choose to create learning pods to engage their children in a collaborative learning environment at home. Well, this work if students at grade level have different classroom teachers, can students from different elementary schools plan to work together on the same curriculum? Will teachers across the grade level be using the same pacing and resources? Next, my name is Zach Gersky Marion Station, father of rising fourth grader. We don't know how many of our children will be infected by COVID before we have a vaccine, but I believe experts like Michael Osterholm, University of Minnesota Center for Infectious Disease Research and Policy, who say most of us will be affected by COVID regardless of government action. Can the superintendent board share the basis for belief that keeping out of kids out of school can keep our kids safe from COVID? I agree with the American Association of Pediatrics assessment that not attending in-person school poses a greater risk to our young children than COVID. Does Mr. Copeland think COVID poses a greater risk to our children than not being able to attend school? Mr. Copeland, share the names of the epidemiologists who told him positivity rates are the same thing as infection rates. Next Sarah Gunther. Our family's in favor of Penn Valley. Our family's in favor of opening school in person in the fall. We trust the school district to take necessary safety and healthy health precautions and we believe it is important to our children's social emotional well-being to meet their teachers in person in order to develop trust in a working relationship. Friendships and relationships with peers is paramount to their development. I understand a hybrid or fully virtual model may be necessary at some point this school year, but given the state of health in PA, now we think reopening in person is appropriate at this time. Leslie Crane Penn Valley. I'm wondering if LMSD at home is ready to roll out in September if the board votes to open in person instead of going with superintendent's recommendation. It seems like the success of that program involves having a bit more time to figure out how many families are interested. Next Fabian Zangrilli. I have three students in the district, one in high school, one in middle school, one in elementary. Remote learning worked for my two older kids, but was a disaster for my kindergartner. Young children don't have the attention span to learn remotely. Why can't we send the elementary age students back to school starting in September? You would have the buses and the space to social distance. This next person's already read. Next is Gianna Tripodi Weiss. I support remote learning until our Gladwin. I support remote learning until our county health data shows it is safe to return to in-school hybrid learning. Teachers and administrations also need to have the option to work remotely. All of our LMSD teachers were very engaged and responsive during the spring semester while teaching remotely and my son was engaged and he learned in every subject. From honors algebra to PE, there is no need for teachers to put themselves and their families at risk. We are in a pandemic and we must put people in safety first. I have an IEP student and social engagement is definitely an issue for him. Remote learning is not ideal, but his teachers found ways to engage groups and learning remotely and he stayed engaged. I think the district should invest in more virtual training for teachers. Also having some teachers share best practices and lesson plans and some sort of internet would be helpful. Cheryl Rothman Brynmar. I support the recommendation to begin school virtually. While I am concerned about the academic and social implications, there is a global pandemic and keeping our children healthy is the number one priority. Thank you for all the hard work being put into coming up with a plan to educate our children while keeping them safe. Stacy Greenberg. And the board vote to have in-person for elementary age kids in middle and high school could be virtual. Dana Lovett Kinwood Elementary. As parents opting to choose to send our kids back to school environment, we assume the inherent risk in doing so. Peter Lee pointed out, Superintendent Copeland's numbers were off-base. They are far lower given the age bracket attending our schools. We need to seize the moment of 2.5 cases day per average in the lower Marion and send our kids back. We, the parents, know inevitably we will be sending, we will be home in the winter. Signing up for another year of remote learning right out of the gate is unacceptable. October 5th should not be our aspirational date. The mental, emotional, and physical health of our children should be the deciding factor in this decision, not how quickly we can get a test result or a contact trace. As LMSD regarded so highly in the state, we should be thinking outside the box, utilizing many of the creative ideas that Ray Ackman put forward tonight. Matthew Tinker Ardmore. With the discussion about infection rates, we need to remember that this disease is highly infectious and many carriers are asymptomatic. Infection rates, especially with adequate testing, are certainly higher than reported. So why does it make sense to open schools when this pandemic is not under control? Next is probably more than two minutes. Andre Langhorst Winwood. Question, why can superintendent Copeland ignore the will of constituents and taxpayers and impose arbitrary unmeasurable annotatable criteria? Superintendent Copeland says he does not care what the majority of parents and teachers think. Superintendent Copeland also incorrectly applies the concept of positivity rate, not those that are just the positives of people getting tested, not percentage of population infected. Not 44 kids will be infected running around in the school. No epidemiologist would ever subscribe to that ever. Superintendent Copeland refuses to provide specifics what positivity rate will satisfy him. Last week, 5% was good enough. Now 3.2% is not. Zero to nine year old positivity is 0.19%. How many contract tracers should there be? Country, county says it's adequate. And refuses to acknowledge that there is 36 testing and 36 hour testing and even less than 24 hour testing available today as reported by doctors. Vote for fully hybrid full slash hybrid option. All else is arbitrary and closes schools for good. Zoom for elementary is harming children and parents. Next Barbara Schick. I suppose the proposal, I support the proposal to stay virtual. Would like to see a couple of months more so we can have a better picture about how the virus situation is working out. There have been many questions about how the data are calculated and we need more time for the public health services for the county to get things straightened out and explained in a way we can trust. Thank you to the board and Mr. Copeland for your efforts to come to a logical decision. It is a difficult time for everyone regardless of which way you go. Sue Heisenger Maritz Penn Valley. Can you please provide the specific criteria that will be used to determine whether it's safe to reopen schools? Positivity rate, testing requirements, contact tracing, et cetera. Saying you will reevaluate in October without any clear basis for evaluation is not acceptable. Montgomery County is under 4% positivity rate and that is holding despite being next to counties with higher rates. Community spread should be locked, looked at in the context of our actual community. Referencing other parts of the state or other states altogether is irrelevant to what is happening in Lower Marion Township. Next Sydney Halpern Rising Senior at Lower Marion Marion Station. I, she said, read anonymously, please. I, I'll let the board read the comment. Just to note, the board sees all of these comments. Kristy Ramirez. Christie Ramirez, Ardmore, to clarify, my first question was in regards to busing and the guidance sent out to transport or children if possible. Multi precautions taken in school be more or less compromised by children taking buses, which in a good day are super crowded. Will bus drivers be equipped and powered to enforce masks? Next is Pablo Laje, the vast majority of kids want to go back to school. Why isn't their voice heard? Next, Lauren Hay from Penn Valley, I am a nurse practitioner that works in a hospital, wearing masks and performing good hand washing. We move around each other, patients and staff alike. We are not moving around in fear of each other. My question is, why do you not trust that masks and good hygiene are enough of social distancing and proven recommendation, but why must they face forward and behave like it's a military setting? Next, Dina Green, I think it is important for the people to know that all virtual options are an affront to the working parents, particularly those in the healthcare field who do not have the option of working from home to supervise online classes. A decision for virtual will force you to use private schools. I'm not sure how Lower Marion can maintain its reputation as a first-rate school district by offering another disappointing year of virtual classes. Libby Collins, Narberth, our family supports Mr. Copeland's recommendation for the 2020, 2021 school year. Next is John Don Winwood, the American Academy of Pediatrics. Strongly advocates that all policy considerations for the coming school year should start with a goal of having students physically present in school. The importance of in-person learning is well documented. There is already evidence of the negative impacts on children because of school closures. If the AAP recommends a return to in-person schooling, how does the superintendent, who is not a physician reconcile this with his wish for unspecified amount of better testing and contact tracing? Next, Emily Rayner Gladwin, sorry if my questions have been covered. I lost connection for part of the meeting. They are as follows. Has any form of outdoor school been considered potentially using large tents? With online school, what will students with difficulty using screens due to headaches and other symptoms they have when using them do? What exactly is going on with fall sports? What is being done to address the mental health crisis facing students? Next, Paul Hollowell, Superintendent Copeland has, has admitted he is not an expert in the area of health. However, he was hired to be an expert in the area of administration of education. Mr. Copeland believe his staff, our teachers are more effective in conveying concepts and educating our children in person or via Zoom? It is also clear that no one on this board or representing our district in this call has any experience in being tested. There is ample availability to be tested and results were provided within 24 hours. My sons were potentially exposed to someone who tested positive and we held them at home until they were tested twice and had results from that were negative. One result was five days and the other 24 hours. Next is Rachel Spigler, please do not have full in-person as an option. An article just came out showing at least one third people not hospitalized for COVID have long lasting health impacts. It's not just mortality rate that is the issue. However, my concern is that teachers have not been preparing for online learning all summer. Having a few PowerPoint skeletons is a far cry from being given the slightest prepared. How can the district do ensure, what can the district do to ensure teachers are geared up for potentially full semester online? Next is Adam Analic of Bella Kinwood, instead of one size fits all, could the newcomers to each school kindergarten, sixth and ninth grade come back in September? Or before then so that those students can be familiar with their new school? Christopher Hug, ninth grader, Marion Station, Lower Marion High School. I would like to be able to go back to school for the first week, one or two weeks so I could get to know my new teachers and so I could see my friends again. If this option could not work, could you do a one week in school and two weeks out of school option? Also, if you do an option that has a part in school, part out of school option, hybrid, would you make it so that we would have to quarantine at home when we are out of school? And lastly, I think that the thinking should be that you should not close down in-person school just because there was one case, but instead you should close down in-person school if there are, say, five or 10 cases. Next, Sarah DeLeo Winwood. Mr. Superintendent Copeland, please outline the top three to five things with data points you are monitoring to see when we get there for you to move to a hybrid model. Mike Fenton, Penn Wooden, I think our children and community safety is of utmost importance. Remote learning must be in place for the start of the school year. And as the second wave of infections rises, we must consider options to extend it past October 5th. I fully trust that the LMSD administration has the students' best interests in mind in the proposed plan. Dana Lehman, Marion Station, weeks ago, the board was sent to vote on the original red, yellow, green plan, and this was delayed to collect more community input. The community and staff survey was clear with a majority of both factions favoring some form of in-person instruction. How is the pendulum now swung to the most restrictive direction and why is the community input now being disregarded? Robert Pace, the superintendent hasn't done nearly enough to address my concerns about the quality of the virtual curriculum. Many of us parents believe that the virtual learning experience in the spring was a failure. The lack of specifics regarding programming for the fall doesn't inspire confidence that it will be much better. Paul, all we have received tonight is a series of anecdotes, pledges that teachers will get trained. What we're hearing now still feels very much half-baked and in flux. By now, in light of the fact that we've spent three months in a virtual mode last spring, we should have been presented a virtual program that is comprehensive, specific and programmatic. This is certainly not the case. Until that happens, the board should reject the superintendent's recommendation. Meredith Barber and Michael Schwager, Welsh Valley, Inhariton, thank you board and administration for all your hard work. If reducing the number of courses would provide the opportunity for hybrid or full in-person learning, wouldn't it make sense to reduce the number of course offerings? Should the plethora of course offerings still be a priority? Catherine Boggs, Marion Station, I'm deeply concerned that the recommended virtual plan will significantly disadvantage families with fewer financial resources, particularly younger children who need more engagement than remote instruction will provide. Families who can afford it will inevitably hire individual or group tutors, while other children will be left to fend for themselves. This almost certainly ensures that the wealthiest children in the district will move ahead of their peers simply because of a parent's ability to afford private instruction. In a fully virtual environment, the LMSD administration would implicitly be supporting such disparate outcomes by not offering a similar degree of in-person instruction for those less affluent. While there have been some mentions of equity tonight, I am not hearing the district's response on how this will be addressed. It seems there is a plan to bring back smaller groups of students back to the building based on special needs and IEPs. Is there some, that's it. It says, is there a similar plan to support families who cannot afford additional learning support? Next, Stephen Chalmers, Ardmore, understandably, the majority of the questions regarding the effects of distance learning on students, but I'm also concerned about our unheralded heroes, our communities, teachers and staff. If they are returning to the classroom, what is the plan to keep them safe? This summer in Arizona, a teacher died of COVID-19 while teaching summer school. The virus is easily transmissible. What happens if there is an outbreak amongst staff? Is there a plan if, when that happens? Lisa Proznitz, Penn Valley, thank you to all the school board members and to the administration for the work you've done. I'm curious about your decision to bring teachers into schools in September. I know that over 1,400 people have signed a petition to enable teachers to be able to teach from home. But aside from that, I'm also interested in hearing about the associated costs with keeping the building open. Is there money there that could be better spent on training and resources for teachers? I'm also hearing that teachers are talking about taking disability this year and want to ensure that we are able to retain them as much as possible. I had many concerns in Mr. Copeland's letter to the teachers, but feel like those concerns could be possibly be addressed in other ways, especially when their safety is at play. Lastly, Google Classroom is a platform, but not a way to teach online. What tools were our teachers used to teach? Also question, read the sickly poll. Thank you. Next is Tina Banya Penn Valley, I agree with Mr. Zakman's comments about trying to have some kind of in-person component outdoors, even just at the beginning of the school year so that students can have some in-person, some kind of in-person connection with their teachers, especially for kids transitioning to new schools such as kindergarten, sixth and ninth grade. Also like her idea of trying to start a consortium to try to improve testing and contact tracing. Karen Schlemann, Marion Station, please consider some sort of in-person physically distance and master course orientation for new to the district families. Our sixth and eighth graders will start a fellow community middle school. Some type of orientation will help from a school community bond for them, particularly with virtual learning to start. Kim Short, I'm wondering what the purpose of the parent survey was when over 80% wanted some type of in-person instruction when the results were not considered or given any credence in the recommendation. Sylvia Kateris, the only responsible decision at this point is the remote learning scenario. And what I believe is the final comment, Adam Getson, Penn Valley, when teachers return to their classrooms, has there been any planning for students receiving continuing education if a teacher gets sick and does not return for health reasons? If a teacher opts out for any reason during, any point during the school year, or a teacher fails to reach minimum health standards in order to return to the classroom after testing positive for COVID-19? If so, what current adjustments have been made to properly staff our schools while we are in a pandemic? That concludes all of the public comment. They were limited to one comment per person, but the board has, is seeing all comments, no matter how many times somebody submitted a comment or if they failed to put their name in the thing. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ruth. And I want to thank everyone for their comments this evening and for the past several weeks. We greatly appreciate everyone taking the time to raise questions and give us your perspectives and experiences and suggestions. So we really do, we have received every, the board members have received every comment and have been doing a lot of reading over the last few weeks of those comments. We are not going to answer questions that were raised this evening. We are going to use the questions that were raised in the chat to develop an FAQ that we can share with families on our website and there will be a lot more communication, you know, coming about sort of next steps as well. Before I move on, I just want to ask if Mr. Copeland has anything he'd like to say?
Well, yeah, what I'd like to do is have Terry Quinlan sort of briefly talk about the issue of positivity versus.
Okay, sure, sure. Again, the positivity rate is the percent of positive tests among all the tests processed. So that, that's a key metric that is looked at because when it gets to above 5%, it can indicate community spread. And it also gives an idea about whether enough testing is being done. It's, it's a helpful metric, but it has to be considered in context. I think what's difficult is to figure out the true number of people infected because so many are asymptomatic. And I know we talked about just considering what was in Lower Marion, the, the percentage in Lower Marion, which really on the surface looks pretty good at, at below 5%. We, we don't have a metric set by the government. For example, like New York City has a metric of 3% for schools to be open. That, that would be easier if we did. So it's low, but I think a lot of people would say that you do have to look at the larger area because people are so mobile. And I think it does sound like we're making movements to improve the testing and the turnaround time, but it, we have heard from a lot of our community members, including as recently as today, that they were unable to get testing in, in that amount of time. So it seems like a discrepancy between some people that are able to get it rather quickly and other people that are not. So again, I think we're moving in the right direction with that.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'm wondering if any board members would like to make any comments before or say anything at all or at, or discuss among ourselves what it is that we're thinking before we vote. If you are interested, can you please put up, raise your hand now? Okay, it's looking like, sorry. Um, okay, I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna, I'll, I'll go alphabetical, which is where the vote's gonna be, but I'll, I'll leave the leadership last. I'll start then.
Quick question. Does it make sense for us to make our statements with our votes rather than?
No, we're not, we're not going to do that. So you can say how you're planning on it, but we will have a roll call vote and that's, so you can indicate how you're planning to vote. That's no problem, but we'll have to have a straight vote. So I'll, I'll start, I'll start with you, Lori.
Yep, the benefits of having an ACT last name, but I, I want to start by saying this is a really extraordinary time in education. I don't think any of us have been sleeping a lot and I really appreciate all the efforts as others have said that everyone has put in, the board, the administration and the community. Clearly what's so special about Lower Marion is how invested everyone is in the schools. These are amazing public schools. I'm a proud public school parent and this has been a hard, hard process for many people. And I appreciate, I, I value the recommendation from our superintendent who's a talented career educator. And I, I don't take that lightly. So I appreciate your focus on safety, Bob. But that being said, I feel like this is a no light on the horizon plan in terms of allowing our kids to get back to school buildings this year. You've offered no clear metrics or standards for when we could as a community even consider that. I appreciate things are changing quickly. But I, I, I would need a lot more clarity on what that pathway to in-person is, would be. And one of the reasons is with my personal experience and the experience of so many, despite our very talented teachers, is remote education does really, does not work for many kids, especially kids who are younger and have challenges with learning in the best circumstances. And given our community's commitment to inclusion and equity and the whole child, I, I, I can't support this plan without a clear pathway towards addressing those issues and the pathway to getting more in-person education available for our community. So I appreciate the time and effort and the investment of everyone in our public schools. But I, I will not be supporting this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Mr. Driscoll, Ben Driscoll? Are there any?
No, go ahead. Do some Dr. Gilbert here. All right. So thank you. So I will be voting to support this plan. It's not a plan that I would want to endorse for any other reasons because we all want our kids back in school. What I'm actually most concerned about is sending them to school, our infection rates go up, we pull them back for remote, do it for a month for remote, put them back in school and we ping pong back and forth for six months out of the year. I don't think that's, that's the right answer. I think that if we are to slowly move into this with the hope that come October, the numbers will get even better than they are today in August, or we can feel more comfortable getting to opening in school. I do hear the concerns of people saying they miss the socialization of it. As my comments earlier, the socialization will not be what you, what it was a year ago. Because it's not just wearing a mask, it's wearing a mask with six feet of separation. That detracts from the socialization of, of being in school. So while we will have So while we will have to have that at some point, I'm not sure that we're gonna have it. When we go to school, we will have that separation. But I don't think that starting now with the hope that things will be great is the way to do this. Those are really my bigger issues. There is no easy answer. I hear the concerns of working parents. I hear the, I guess, the social isolation that kids are feeling from being at home, only interacting through a screen. My hope, my hope is if we do this right, as right as we can be here in September, maybe we can get some in-person education in October, when things catch up, when Ms. Quinlan feels better about the data she's seeing. We can feel better about this. So again, I just don't see that we're ready. I don't see this grasping for, I understand the want for socialization. It just won't be the way we think it will be in class yet, and I want to get us there. That's where I want to get us. So I think going slower is more important. And that's all. So thank you, Dr. Gilbert.
Thank you, Mr. Driscoll. And now Deborah Finger, Ms. Finger.
So this is a decision that I do not take lightly. I am an educator. I am a parent. I understand the need for students to be in school. I empathize with all of the concerns about student well-being, childcare, parents that need to be back at work. As an educator and a board member, I understand we are to provide a safe, supportive, respectful, welcoming environment for our students, teachers, and staff. No one can learn if they do not feel safe. And that safety encompasses emotional as well as physical safety, and this applies to everyone. And we've chosen the superintendent to lead the district. And during the last several years, he has led us in what I believe is a positive direction. To that end, and sorry, let me back up a little. And I have read through all of the community, all of the emails, all of the comments, many from physicians, and many with various and often opposite opinions. There really is no clear-cut answer. But as I said, we have, we chose the superintendent and we rehired the superintendent because he has led us in a positive direction and has made many, many positive changes for our district. And I'm not going to name them. And so to that end, I am putting, I am going to support the superintendent's recommendation to begin with a virtual option with the expectation that we are working towards getting our students back in school and that we're not going to just get to October and push it off. That we're going to work to make this a, what is it, can we, what can we do to get them in the building? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Finger. Shayna Kalish?
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. Even the way the board is structured, members rarely have the opportunity to speak so openly with our constituents. I don't pretend to speak for my colleagues, the administration, or the community, but for myself and my family, when I say that this is, has been, and will continue to be hard. There's no perfect solution. We're one of 500 districts in Pennsylvania, which is in turn one of 50 states in our country. And if there were a perfect solution to be had, it would have been shared and universally adopted already. To that end, I don't think anyone is wrong here. Their important considerations to this issue, the health of our students and staff, balanced with the mental health of our students, staff, and family, educational quality, the socialization of our children, and the burden of home education for our working families. Each individual has to weigh and prioritize these issues differently. For a long time, I was certain that any effort to have our children in-person to any degree was the right choice. I have faith in the thoughtfulness and tirelessness that our administration has put into tackling this truly unprecedented emergency. If they said they could bring our students and staff in safely, I would believe them. But after listening to Superintendent Copeland and Ms. Quinlan repeat their discomfort at the idea of in-person education, it slowly evolved my thinking. They've not said it outright, but my impression from hours of reading and discussion and listening is that it is not safe, possible to safely physically open our schools at this point. I hate to think that my job as school director has evolved into one where I'm helping to make health choices for our entire community. I cannot make a choice that would potentially lead a student, staff member, or member of the larger community to become seriously ill or die. I couldn't wake up in the morning knowing that I exposed your child to that risk, especially with these warnings so plainly in front of my face. I mourn the loss of this in-person experience for however it lasts for our community, for my child, and for myself. I'll continue to be an outspoken voice, holding the administration to account and establishing clear guidelines for when and how a safe reopening can occur, hopefully as soon as October. And I'll urge the administration to make in-person experiences available to our highest needs students as soon as possible. Tonight, I will be voting yes on the superintendent's recommendation.
You're muted.
I apologize. I said, "Thank you, Ms. Kalish," and I asked if Peter Lee would like to speak. You're muted.
If we're going alphabetical, does Lucy go before me?
Lucy's the vice president, so she's gonna go second to last.
Great, okay, thank you. All right. So I wanted to start by thanking Mr. Copeland and the administration for the many hours of work you put into planning for school this fall. Regardless of whether I agree with you on this proposal or not, I applaud you for doing what you think is right in the face of significant pushback and criticism. Certainly a challenging time, and there's a lot of uncertainty. I think the key point here, though, is that there doesn't appear to be a single right answer that'll meet everyone's needs. No matter what, the district needs to have a comprehensive plan for a full virtual opening, whether it's this fall or simply as a contingency. I think everyone's experience this past spring tells us we need to have a better plan. So I'm not making this vote easily, but given the timing, I'll be voting yes. There doesn't seem to be sufficient time to deny the proposal and give the district enough time to prepare for a successful opening. And then giving teachers sufficient time to prepare, I think, is important. Voting yes will keep that planning moving rather than pushing us into another cycle of proposals and arguing. Because the real cost of another cycle of proposals ends up delaying the work of the parent to educate. That being said, I do believe the district should be able to support some sort of hybrid opening for those families who are willing to accept the risk and whose children are able to comply with any and all safety precautions. The current plan to start virtually with teachers in-building actually positions us well to support that. And so I don't think this is the end of the conversation. I think we need to let the district move forward with planning. And I think there are further discussions that need to be had about broadening our support of letting parents and families opt in to risk rather than, as Ms. Kalish notes, I wouldn't want to make that decision for families, but for those families that are willing to accept the risk and whose children can comply with all the safety precautions. I think there is enough data to support that that could be done too.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Sean Moran?
Thank you. And again, to the administration and Mr. Copeland, I thank you for all of the work and effort that you have put into coming up with this plan and proposal. And as my colleagues have shared, this was, has definitely been one of the hardest decisions that I've had to arrive to. And in no way do we take lightly the, what's been put in our laps to make a decision on tonight. And, you know, Ford, I've been reading hundreds of emails and listening to our teachers and students and parents and, you know, and also many conflicting reports from experts. We live in a community that is fraught with a number of experts and professionals and doctors and researchers who have advised us in which way to go and been receiving conflicting information as well as the research that we've been doing. But, you know, at the end of the day, you know, the difficulties and the ways in which our students are suffering from not being able to be together. And admittedly, I believe that the virtual programming needs to make sure that it is at the best level that it could be in order to instruct our children. But at the end of the day, for me, the risk to our children's teachers and community safety outweighs the difficulty that we will have in putting together a strong program, which I do believe that we can and will do. But I will be supporting the recommendation to open virtually.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moran. Subba Robinson?
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. We've heard from and read many passionate letters from parents, students, teachers on all sides of this reopening issue. As someone who has had COVID in my family, I understand its severity and long-lasting effect. My daughter is still living with the effects since having it in March. With that in mind, I will vote yes to operating remotely for now and reevaluating around October 5th. Please know that we are trying to do what is right by each and every student. And thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Robinson. Lucy Klein?
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. This decision has weighed on me heavily. My current mantra, as many of the people I've spoken with recently know, is what is the least worst option available? Because frankly, I'm finding that in the middle of this pandemic, there aren't really any good options. Every decision is fraught with risks, with unknowns, with future unintended consequences. There's so much we don't know about COVID, and I find it a real struggle to feel that every decision made, it feels like choosing between a child's mental health and their and the community's physical health. As my colleagues have all stated, or I'm also concerned about what metrics will be used to move into hybrid or fully back to school. I agree with Mr. Copeland and that the testing and the contact tracing currently aren't to the level that would make me comfortable. But shared Lori's and others' concern that without some identified metrics, that there won't be a specific point in time in which we can say, "Okay, we're ready to start moving back towards opening." And I agree that we need to identify those specific metrics quickly. I'm also really concerned about our most vulnerable students and especially those special needs students who need daily interaction and support and for whom virtual schooling is not sufficient, for students who are struggling and for families for whom childcare is a serious concern. I want to make sure that we bring those special needs students to school as quickly as possible and that the first few weeks of school includes a focus on how to provide in-person, small group opportunities for those most in need. And for those who are transitioning to new schools, I think sort of that kindergarten, sixth grade, ninth grade transition can be really difficult. I'm concerned about equity and making sure all of our students get what they need. I'm concerned about our students' mental health and the need to make connections with teachers and peers. But I also know that if we're able to provide in-person instruction, it's not schools we know it. It would have a radically different look and feel, desks six feet apart, people facing forward, opportunities for one-on-one teacher-student and small group works severely curtailed. But I recognize that tonight's decision comes with serious trade-offs. But at this point in time, from a public health perspective, I do think that fully remote learning right at the beginning of the school year is the right decision. We need to consider not only our students' health, but also the risks to our teachers and to our staff. Mr. Moran and I had had a conversation recently that really resonated with me. It was a framework around balancing short-term hardship versus long-term health risks. And I think that that really framed it very well in my decision-making. And at this point in time, I feel like I need to tip that toward health risks, that starting virtually is the least worst option. And I say that with a heavy heart because like many other parents in our communities, I really want the kids back in school. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Liz Klein. I just want to start by saying thank you to the central administrators, many of whom are, I'm seeing here, building administration, LMEA, teachers, nurses, counselors, our staff across the district, transportation folks, facilities, IT and food services, who have all given just tremendous amounts of time, expertise, and ingenuity to respond to the needs of our students and families in the middle of this unprecedented pandemic. And, you know, our school district, like the districts across the country and world, really had to adapt with no lead time and continued educating our students. And I'm especially proud of the fact that we moved very quickly to provide Chromebooks for families who didn't have access to them and that we've provided, I think, over 80,000 meals to students and families so far. And I'm also particularly thankful for the leadership of Superintendent Copeland during this difficult time because of his deep well of experience, his thoughtfulness and creativity, and most of all, his laser-like focus on our students' educational experiences in all the different varieties. He's been incredibly concerned with the health and safety of our students and teachers and other staff, as well as the wider community, and his concern with equity issues, and particularly our most vulnerable students. So I believe that the proposed plan, which opens virtually unfortunately, but slowly and safely, allows us to bring some children into the building for face-to-face education, particularly our most vulnerable kids, is the best balance. I think my other colleagues have said, there's no, there's no solution to this. It's a balance between health and safety, education and equity at this time. And as a parent, I understand the conflicting desires for, you know, the safety of our children as well as knowing that school is really where they need to be best to thrive. And, you know, this pandemic, I think, has really taught us the value of well-funded public education and what a well-funded public education provides to children. I've read many, you know, these many, many emails from parents who want us to open immediately in some form. It's really heartbreaking to read about the hardship that some families and many, many students have been experiencing. I mean, all families, but there's really an equity issue here. As an educator myself, my own research is on both digital divide issues as they impact equity in education and employment and healthcare. And I've also done a lot of research on gender and occupational segregation and childcare issues for women and particularly how that affects people with less resources. I am very well aware of the social and economic justice issues that this decision implies. And I have to say, you know, I've been on the board, I think, 11 years. This is by far the most difficult decision. My own belief, and this is very, you know, personal, is that the pandemic has just exposed the absolute inequalities in our society and the way in which we need national childcare and healthcare and a minimum income and, you know, internet as a public utility. And I realize- And I realize that everybody's gonna be saying, "What does that have to do with this?" But the reason why this decision has been so difficult is because we know that those things don't exist. And that is why this is gonna be so difficult for many of our families. And yet, I believe, I trust Mr. Copeland. If my superintendent is telling me that he does not feel that he can do this safely, then I am going to be supporting him in that. And I am hoping that, over time, that we will be taking this virus more seriously and that, you know, we will all be wearing our masks and figuring out how to make these numbers go down while we're all waiting for, you know, hopefully, a vaccine. So with that, I guess, at this point, we need to have a formal vote. But we first need to turn it over to Mr. Copeland to make the recommended action.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. The administration recommends that the Board of School Directors approves the Lower Marion School District Health and Safety Plan as attached and authorizes the superintendent or designee to submit such plan to the Pennsylvania Department of Education in the form and manner prescribed by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. To the extent that the procedures outlined in the Health and Safety Plan in its current form or as amended in the future conflict with any applicable board policy or administrative regulation, the approval by the Board of the Health and Safety Plan and any amendments thereto shall also be considered approval of an exception to the policy or administrative regulations in conflict for the limited purpose of carrying out the provisions of the Health and Safety Plan. The Board authorizes the superintendent or designee to take any other actions the superintendent deems appropriate without further board approval to ensure the safety of students and staff to the extent authorized by law and irrespective of any policies that may be to the contrary, including minor revisions to the plan, which shall then be approved by the Board at a subsequent meeting.
Great, thank you. At this time, I would like all board members to unmute, please, so that when we do the roll call, you will just be able to say yes, no, or abstain. Is everyone unmuted?
Yes.
Okay, before we go there, is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. At this time, Ms. LaPera will take a roll call, which will be alphabetical, except I will be last. Ms. LaPera?
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. Ms. Ackman?
No.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Ms. Finger?
Yes.
Ms. Kalish?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Gilbert?
Yes.
I have one against and eight in favor. Motion passes.
Thank you very much. And again, I want to thank everybody who has stayed with us to this point. And we will be, I know that the administration will be moving very quickly to begin, to continue its planning for this. But I expect that we will have more communication so that families can get a better idea of what to expect. And I believe we'll be creating an FAQ. And we will be continuing to read all of the comments that are sent to us. And with there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.